Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the November twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-three meeting of the Chatham Select Board. Please note this meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly thereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please notify the chair. Seeing none. Pursuant to Governor Healey's March twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-three signing of the Acts of twenty twenty-three, extending certain COVID nineteen measures adopted during the state of emergency, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter thirty-eight, subsection twenty, until March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. This meeting of the Chatham Select Board is being conducted in person and via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public adequately, adequately access the proceeding as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to the meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number one five zero eight nine four five four four one zero, conference ID two zero three three eight six four nine one pound, or join the meeting via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Channel TV, which is now Xfinity Channel eight and ten seventy, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. This kind of first item of the agenda tonight is a roll call to establish quorum. Select Board Member Shell.
Present.
Select Board Member Dykens is on his way. Select Board Member Davis.
Present.
Select Board Member Nacastro.
Present.
And Select Board Member Metters is present. So we have a quorum. We're all set to go. Just give you a little rundown of the items, agenda tonight. We have a set of minutes from November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three. We will get into public announcements and agenda item requests. We have two public hearings, one for utility poll, and a second to consider disbanding, disbandment of the Aunt Lydia's Cove Committee. We will follow then into public comments on the business agenda, which is the following. Our renewed Chatham Shellfish Company agricultural lease, item B, seasonal shellfish area openings, item C, considered use of town resources for the First Night Committee, item D is a series of one-day alcohol permits. We have eleven, actually. Item E, stepping stones, road property, next step for the proposed purpose of affordable and or attainable housing, an allocation of affordable housing trust, trust and select board responsibilities. I'm going to note, I'm going to allow public comment to occur during that item. So just please note that I will allow comment when we come to that item. Item F, Sears Park Landing Access Discussion. Item G, consider expansion of the Council on Aging Board of Directors. As I had previously promised, a comment will be accepted also during that item. Just to note also, just for informational purposes, and we will get to this more in depth later, we have had three individuals who have withdrawn their application to serve on the committee. So that discussion later tonight may be shorter than originally expected. And then finally, we will get into appointments for the Council on Aging and Zoning Board of Appeals and wrap up our evening with the report from the town manager for October twenty twenty-three. So with all that being said, we will start with approval minutes for November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. I will accept a motion to approve.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Do I hear any comments? Mike?
Yeah, I had no comments. I'm just, I wanted to ask the question how these, since there was part of these, were reflected at joint meeting with the Board of Health, how these get integrated with their minutes of their meeting and, and to the extent that they have to be in any way put together.
So my understanding is, once you approve them, I will forward them to the Board of Health and they will post on their listing that they had for the meeting as well. So it's one set of minutes that gets put for both meetings.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Dean?
Yeah, thank you. I just, Kathy, just a couple. I should probably have given these to you in advance. These are just, I think, typos. On the, on the participants at the beginning, was Mr. Sheehan? I don't remember him being there in person. Maybe he was there virtually. Edward Sheehan among the participating members of the Board of Health. Check that. And then under those participating from the public, I think we should add the names of Mr. Tapper and Mr. Sangel. And on page nine, Mr. Tapper's name is appears as Tupper. I think it's a Tupper with an E. Page nine, about two-thirds of the way down.
Sorry, what was the?
On page nine?
Yep, no, I see that.
Richard Tupper. I think it's Tepper.
Tepper, okay.
I think his name is Tepper.
All right.
That's it. Thank you.
Additional comments or corrections? All those in favor, Select Board Member Nacastro?
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis?
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell?
Aye.
And I will abstain since I was not present. So next, public announcements or agenda item requests. I'll start with the board first. Anyone? Any staff? Anyone from the audience who are in-house tonight? Anyone from the audience online? All right, moving right along. Public hearing. First, we have a public hearing for, actually, since our clerk is still on his way, I will.
Want me to read it?
Do you want to do it, honor? Sure, please.
The Chatham Select Board will hold a public hearing at five thirty PM on Tuesday, November twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three, to consider a petition from Verizon New England Inc. and N-Star Electric Company doing business as EverSource Energy to upgrade three existing poles, forty-seven slash thirty.
Three seven slash thirty.
Forty-seven slash thirty-one, forty-seven slash thirty-two, with associated storm guying on the west side of Morris Island Road, and install three new poles, forty-seven thirty A, forty-seven thirty-one A, and forty-seven thirty-two A with associated guying along the east side of Morris Island Road. This work and storm guying is requested by EverSource Energy to support the existing poles. Public is welcome to attend the meeting in person or participate via link in the meeting's posted agenda. All interested parties are encouraged to participate. Sign the Select Board.
Thank you very much. Do we have a representative from the utility company?
Yes.
Perfect. Good evening.
Tom Stanton Pike Electric, representing Verizon. As you read, this is an EverSource request to upgrade the three poles and has a history of having a lot of problems out there with storms. I surveyed the job yesterday and the three poles that are requested tonight for the hearing are already set. I looked into it a little bit and the job got released before the public hearing. So that's where we stand on this.
All right, thank you. Well, this is a public hearing. I'm going to open it up for public questions or comments. Anyone from the live audience tonight have a question or comment? Is there anyone online who has a question or comment?
No.
I'll go to the board. Does the board have any questions or comments?
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the request.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, further discussion? Probably lucky if it gets approved, it says they're set.
Thank you very much.
All those approved, Select Board Member Nacastro?
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis?
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell?
Aye.
And Select Board Member Metter says aye. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Second public hearing is for the considered disbanding of the Aunt Lydia's Cove Committee. Do the honors. Thank you.
Notice is hereby given that the Chatham Select Board will hold a public hearing in accordance with section five-two of the Home Rule Charter on Tuesday, November twenty-eight, two thousand twenty-three, at five thirty PM in the large meeting room at the Town Hall Annex, two sixty-one George Ryder Road, to consider disbanding the Aunt Lydia's, Aunt Lydia, Lydia's Cove Committee. Remote participation will be available through a link in the posted agenda. All interested parties are encouraged to participate. Sign the Select Board.
Thank you very much. Just provide a little background material before we reach out for public comments. First, on November twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three, our town manager, executive assistant Kathy Lewis, sent a message out to all members of the current Aunt Lydia's Cove Committee, informing them of this meeting and hearing. So there was notification. Also, I want to read this into the record and then I want a brief comment for clarification purposes also. So this came in through, this came in yesterday, on November twenty-seventh, addressed to the full Select Board. It was from Nicholas Muto, who is a current member of Aunt Lydia's Cove. The message reads, "I am contacting all Chatham Select Board members to ask for consideration to keep the Aunt Lydia's Cove Committee active and intact. As a member of the committee, not only was I not informed of such process to eliminate the committee, I am not able to be present for the meeting and advocate for the continuation of the group. After a brief conversation with Mr. Metters, I was, I have come to my understanding that I am not the chairman of the sub, of the committee. Although a vote was taken at the last meeting to elect myself as such, I have a vision for the committee to involve more fishermen in the group, expand the scope of the committee, to guide the Select Board to issue, on issues in the future. The Aunt Lydia's Cove Committee is an important group within the town, and I am committed to bringing it back to good standing and a useful, useful tool to aid the town." So to respond to my comments, just to give full disclosure, Mr. Muto and I discussed this situation yesterday in person, and I have been operating under the influence or understanding that the past chairman, which was Doug Feeney, was the last active chairman. And they had a meeting on June first, two thousand twenty-three, and I went back and checked the tape. The agenda had two items on it. One was an update on the fish pier construction, and the second item was an update on the South Bay Packing Lease. At the very end of the meeting, Mr. Feeney, being his last meeting, made a kind of sub phrase, yes, basically, this is it. Thanks. I'm done. Who's going to be the next chairman? And Mr. Muto was like, I'd been interested in it. I want, I like it. There was a vote, and that is where his understanding of him being the chairman stands. First, I've heard about it. One, there was no reorganization listed on the agenda item. Two, since June first, I've never known Mr. Muto was the presumed chairman of the committee, and which I guess kind of concerns me more since it's been months and we haven't had a meeting yet. So we will get into further discussions on that, but I just want to shed some light on the mentioning of my name in this, the body of this email. And I will, and I'll answer any questions later on that if necessary. So anyway, this is a public hearing. I'm going to open it up to the public for first comments. I will start with the public in-house tonight. Does anyone have any questions or comments this evening on potentially disbanding the Aunt Lydia's Cove Committee? None. Is there anyone online that has any questions or comments?
Not at this time. Oh, I see Stuart.
Stuart? Yes, please.
Yeah. Sorry if I could figure out how to put my hand. Oh, there's my hand. I'll do that next time. But thanks for allowing me to speak this evening. As some of you might not know, the Aunt Lydia's Cove Committee has been in existence since the nineteen sixties. So somewhere around sixty years or so, advising the Board of Selectmen and the other town folks on the operations at the fish pier. They have some requirements in the regulations for reviewing the, the leases for the fish pier and ensuring that, making recommendations on leases for the use of the fish pier. They weighed in on all of the improvements that have been done recently and in the, not recent past. They've weighed in on a number of dredging issues over the years. I just think that perhaps I'd like to suggest that a delay in disbanding the committee after, after sixty years with, I understand an email was sent out to the committee members, but I think it would be better to allow them to have a meeting, even request that they have a meeting and to discuss the issue. They may agree. They may have some suggested alternatives. Sounds like Nick has some thoughts. I think some of the other committee members do. I think that would just be a more productive way about maybe reorganizing or ultimately maybe you do disband the committee, but I think it deserves a little bit more thought and time as opposed to a kind of a rush. I think they, at a minimum, deserve to be requested to have a meeting so they could discuss something like this. You know, I found it to be a helpful group, and we don't always agree, but that's, that's good, right? We want that type of debate. Maybe, maybe there's a way to reorganize it into a broader, broader spectrum of fishermen throughout the community. I think that has some real possibilities. But I, I would encourage you to wait on disbanding the committee until they can weigh in and we could even have, you know, a more general public meeting with the, with the fishermen at large to come up with some thoughts and ideas because I think, I don't think we want to disband the committee prior to having thought out what might come after it. So, you know, I, I know that it's been mentioned that they don't meet often. You know, I don't think people, the committee should be penalized for, for not meeting. They, they, they do meet when requested. They do meet when there's an issue. They've always met when the Board of Selectmen has requested. They do so to discuss, you know, some subject or issue that the board may have. There's, there's no requirement that they meet. So, you know, on any regular schedule. So I think that those are, those are my thoughts. And, you know, for a longstanding committee, I just don't see that it's absolutely necessary that the committee be disbanded tonight. A little bit more discussion, I think, would be more, you know, would have a better conversation and be, they, you know, at least the current members might feel a little better about, about being included in the decision. I know some conversations that had through emails and through discussions through another committee around this discussion, but I think that they need to have a meeting to discuss this. Thank you.
Thank you, Stuart. Couple comments I will provide. I have was the most, I am the most recent liaison to the committee. I know the prior chair, Mr. Feeney, and I had a very good relationship communicating. I know they're going back a couple, over a couple of years, we, we suggested having meetings, and it was very difficult for him to collectively get the bodies together for one reason or another to have meetings. And we were saying, okay, we'll get it closer to the holidays. Okay, we'll do it after the holidays. And for one reason or another, there were some struggles getting an actual, you know, committee schedule put together for the group. Clearly, on, on, on an everyday basis, being down the fish pier, they probably weighed in tremendously in their day-to-day duties. But as a functioning committee, they have only met minimally over the last couple of years. And you're correct, they're, they were basically established as an ad hoc committee. The question I actually have for you, because the very tail end of the meeting on June first, after you guys went over the two updates and, and actually just before the, the, I guess, the, the vote of transition of chairman, is you were having some brief discussions about maybe this committee being, being better served as a commercial fisheries committee or some kind of other title to, you know, of the sort. And I guess the question is, you know, has the Aunt Lydia's Cove and its, and its current structure, you know, you know, having the inability to steadily weigh in formally on, on meetings, is it time for them to, to, you know, be restructured? And is there a better form? I know back on past histories, past discussions this board has had, we've talked about combining multiple waterway committees, and personally, I've always pushed back on that because we've always had multiple individuals willing to serve on each of these committees. And, you know, I find it, if there's willing bodies, then we should let them function. Unfortunately, the Cove has, you know, kind of falling away from the collective group of consistently meeting or even, you know, meeting at a minimal over the last couple of years. I know there's been some discussion about combining them to other, you know, waterway committees, you know, the waterway committee specifically, and I, and I'm, which I'm also the liaison to. I have a little bit of reluctance on making a seven-member committee, you know, a nine-member committee, for example. I do think fisherman representation on the waterway committee down the road would make a whole lot of sense. And I think as openings come up on the waterway committees, that is, that is maybe the type of recruits we are looking to place on future opening seats. But I would be curious to see what the board's position is because, you know, maybe it's time for us to disband the Cove Committee and, you know, second step down the road is to create a commercial fishing committee or some other entity that are better representative of the current review and actions that a committee would need to, need to have. So those are just my general thoughts at the moment. I'm going to open up to the board for com-
Well, I think, didn't you have a question? I think there was a question for me in there.
No, you're, the, the, the commercial fisheries committee concept.
Right.
Versus what, you know, the Cove Committee kind of has been historically tasked with. Do you want to expand on that or just?
No, I think, I think you have a good point. I think that that's kind of been bandered around recently. You know, the, but I- You know, the, but I, I will say that having, having worked with the Cove Committee since literally 1985, 88, I'm sorry, 1988, I have a long history with them. And they, they do provide real value in not only the operations at the fish pier, but on, you know, more recently on a broader sense, you know, fisheries and fishermen access to different public properties and moorings and all those types of discussions. And that's important, you know. I'm concerned that we are, you know, by happenstance or by, you know, economics, I'm not sure, but that we're losing our commercial fishing influence in the community. And by, by getting rid of a committee, a longstanding committee, that doesn't cost anything, they are an easy, they're an easy committee to deal with, that, you know, it's not like they meet every month because they're not going to meet just to have a meeting and not talk about anything. They talk, they have a meeting when there's an issue. But as far as a broader commercial fishermen fisheries type committee, I, I think that that is worthy of some discussion. It's something that would include more fishermen from Stage Harbor or Riders Cove, so they'd feel more involved and that voice counted. I think that has real value. I just, I just, I don't think that they're, after, you know, six decades, we have to disband the committee tonight. I would prefer to have a more open discussion with them and then maybe they would be part of that process. And we could, we could come back soon with a, some thoughts from the Cove Committee and maybe some other fishermen from around the community. But it, but yes, a more general fisheries type related committee for the fishermen throughout the community, not just Aunt Lydia's Cove, I think that that has real value. But I would, I would, I wouldn't disband this one first. I would get that in line and do them both at once.
All right. Thank you, Stuart. Comments or questions from the board? Ms. Davis.
So I was the past liaison of that committee and I can say that the meetings were not happening under my last, you know, when I was, when I was liaison. And that was during the time of the construction of the fish pier. So there was a, there was a gap, there was a bit of time before that there were regular meetings and people were weighing in. But then, you know, whether it's time commitments, whether it's subject matter or what, but, you know, I've known this committee not to have met and not to, and had, actually, we've appointed people that have never attended a meeting with that committee, which I find a bit, you know, they're not, they weren't fishermen. They were, I think they were either butters to the properties or interested in the fish pier. But they never attended one. But one of the things that, that I see is, you know, when we, we talked about what's going on here, a lot of it is that the committee itself had not been doing due diligence during the fish pier project. I, I have to disagree a bit with the, with the, with the harbor master on, on his take on that. They really didn't weigh in on the matters. I think that if the committee itself had great concerns about the work that they needed to be done, no matter who the chairman was, you as a liaison or me as liaison, they could have come to us and talked to us about getting a meeting together. That didn't seem to happen either, which I thought was kind of frustrating. And so when we brought this subject up in, at our meeting, when we talked about the reorganizing the committees and, and just reviewing committees at large, we talked about where they were and what, what they're, what they're doing. There's a lot of things that have changed and I, I don't, I don't disagree with the harbor master on the issue that losing our voice within the commercial fishing industry in the town can be a, you know, could be a challenge. What we have to look at, I think, is the oversight of Aunt Lydia's Cove efficiently and the oversight of, let's say, the trap dock and any other commercial activity areas and get some good, good feedback from folks, you know, that, that will give us some good oversight and under, better understanding of what the needs are. That's just not happening. And I, in my vision, and what I was thinking was if waterways could take on the agenda of Aunt Lydia's Cove and Trap Dock and others and kind of look at a program that could be put together, whether they make the recommendation back to us to say, yes, we still need a, we need a committee that's going to do A, B, and C, or they say, add some representation on our committee and we can take care of it all. That's where I am right now. One thought on the commercial fishing thing, and I'm, what I would say as far as that representation is, there's a long history as to why Chatham itself doesn't have a Chatham Fishermen's Association. It used to, it used to be vibrant. It met on more issues around fishing regulations, but did weigh in on town matters. But one thing about the Aunt Lydia's Cove Committee and people might not understand is there, there's always been this culture of people who fished the south side, which is Stage Harbor, and people who fished the east side, and they never really got together and talked to each other. And then there's gear types that didn't talk to each other. So, you know, there was a, a little bit of loss of that kind of culture when nonprofit came into town and was, you know, became a rising voice amongst fisheries regulations, but didn't really get engaged or involved into matters that were more political into the town as far as fishermen are concerned, though those members of those organizations have weighed in in different ways. But we have a commercial, we have a Chamber of Commerce and it gives us representation to our, you know, to us as, as a select board weighs in on matters of business. And we also, you know, if there was to be a fishing organization that was organized within the community, that became something that represented the entire fleet, including the shellfish community, and that was an entity that says we are, you know, like a chamber of fishing and sort of weighed in to this, that would be of value and, and probably would be more, you know, would have some substance. Whether that would happen or not, that is a private thing that could or could not happen. But the idea of creating some sort of commercial representation within the committee or looking at this later on is, is where I'm at. I, I just don't think that this committee as it's structured is functioning appropriately. These are promises, but these, you know, and that, and ideas and hopes and, but that was, this was in June, folks. This, it's now December. That, you know, the idea that they were going to take on something and, and move forward with it, it's, it's December. And I understand fishing gets in the way of this, but, you know, there hasn't been any action since, since the June meeting. So that's, that's my thoughts right now.
All right. Thank you. Dean.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I, I have not served as liaison to this committee, but I know that historically people contested for seats on this committee. And when I was on the finance committee, there was a proposal to amend the bylaws to restrict membership of the committee to a year-round residence. And that was, that was not passed at town meeting. I do know that I serve on the Parking Solutions Working Group and there was representation from this committee on that group, but I, the meeting, I attend, I've attended most of the meetings. But I don't recall ever having, hearing or seeing a representative from that committee participate. The genesis of the idea of disbanding the committee came up, as, as Shereen was saying, at the recently held working group, the working session that this board held on committees as part of our annual review. And I went into that session hoping that we might eliminate some committees because I personally think we have too many committees. And even the Creek Pod Chronicle wrote an article on that. And the result was just attention to eliminating this one committee. I mean, I want to defer it to the harbor master because, and to Shereen as well, because they, they know this area much, much better than I do. I think the idea was that the responsibilities of the Cove, the Aunt Lydia's Cove Committee could be subsumed onto the Waterways Committee, whether by adding some representation or not. I'll tell you one thing I don't think we, this town has done with respect to the Waterways Committee or this committee. And Shereen was talking about having the possibility of private representation and that would be good. We have people serving on committees who have vested interests in what they're participating in. There are issues under the conflict of interest law for that. Now, there's a solution for that, and that is to have the town adopt a bylaw that specifies that you shall have certain number of representation, a certain, certain number of representatives from the commercial fishing or whatever. We haven't done that. There was some talk about doing that a few years ago at the Waterways Committee and it never really came to fruition. So I hope if we do, and create some sort of a commercial fishing committee, that we keep that in mind when we structure it so we don't put people at risk under the conflict of interest law. I don't know, I, you know, you're the, Corey, you're the liaison to this committee, so I, I would largely defer it to the board liaison as to what, you know, you think we should do. But I, I do give some regard to what Stuart has said as well as Shereen.
Thank you. I'll make some comments in a moment. Jeff, heard Mike?
Yeah, I, I appreciate the revision of the history or review of the history and the genesis of why this is on the agenda. I, I just want to have the most efficient voice to engage fishermen. And it looks as though the Aunt Lydia's Cove Committee, at least on the east side, the Aunt Lydia's Cove Committee is not that efficient tool to engage the fishing community. They haven't met. When you do a major restructuring or a major project down the fish pier and they don't weigh in. We did invite them to the, to the traffic committee and no one ever showed up because we were playing around with the notion of having kiosks at the fish pier and we never had, never heard from, never heard from. So I, you know, I, I tend to think that we fold this into the Waterways Committee and if we need to expand that, that representation by a couple of people, that's, that's okay with me. And I'm intrigued by the notion of a commercial fishing committee, but I think that takes a lot more vetting and thought and before we just jump into the fray there. But I do think that the commercial fishing industry needs a strong voice à la the Chamber. I think that, I think that's an excellent point. So my notion was to fold the Aunt Lydia's Cove Committee into the, into the Waterways Committee. And I think, I still think it holds credence and I would be in favor of that. Thanks.
Mike?
Yeah, I, well, first of all, I, I'm not, I'm not even close to expertise here. I really am at a very fundamental level of understanding, but I'll say two things. One, I thought in our working group that we didn't take a vote, we didn't do anything that, that evinced it, but I heard a consensus that it was time to, in effect, assign the, the responsibilities of this committee to the Waterways Committee, subject to the chairman's decision to perhaps expand the committee if necessary, as, as you've heard discussed here. And that seemed in that conversation to be a reasonable resolution of the issue. Having said that, I, I'm, I, I don't feel comfortable completely ignoring the harbor master's comments and recommendation. I, I guess my reaction here would be that after 60 years, if it takes us another 60 days to come to a definitive decision to disband the committee, that's, that's probably not a bad thing. I would say though, I think we need to have, in one fashion or another, a royal invitation to the, the committee to come before us and let us know if, if they have some strong resistance and rationale for it, for staying in, in, in being and, and subject to that, I think we probably ought to go with our consensus of the working group. Thank you.
Shereen, then I'll follow. Yep.
Just quickly, Mike, they, they were invited to hear. We've had a public meeting and we've sent them an invitation, so, I mean-
Believe me, I, I know. I know. I'm saying, you know, this is, this is sort of, you know, that last stay of execution, shall we say.
Basically, I, to speak as transparently as possible, I mean, the formal meeting representation of this committee over the last couple of years has been very disappointing. Clearly, they're down to the fish pier all the time and they're probably, and general comments weighing into the harbor master in, in the process. So their eyes are there, their, their business is there, their, you know, their daily life is down there. So they, they've provided some insight informally for, for certain. You cannot deny that because they're down on that location. Unfortunately, the formal process and they haven't taken the opportunity to weigh in on some of our larger projects in a formal manner in the last couple of years. You know, there's been a couple of new members that were appointed. So my understanding is one gentleman has not been to a, a meeting. Another new member has attended, was attended in, on the June first meeting. And then another new member, which was one of the butters, I guess, has formally resigned. So, you know, we have a core, we have two, two open seats on the committee too. So it's not like this is a full committee. As far as adding him to the Waterways Advisory Committee, I, I wish I am also the liaison to. I understand some of the concept of that, but I am a little hesitant to do it because personally, serving, you know, watching all these committees over all these years, getting to nine members can be a little bit difficult at times, especially quarums, especially in the wintertime. The Waterway Committee has been functioning very well over these last couple of years. They meet on a regular basis. The attendance is relatively good. There's a couple of members that miss it, miss some meetings here and there, but they're, they're a functioning committee and they're, they're engaged and they weigh in. And if they have to have a meeting, they have a meeting. And I'm a little reluctant to add a couple more bodies to, to, that could, you know, may disrupt the process just by the pure volume of the committee. So I guess at the end of the day, I'm not overly optimistic that the Cove Committee can pull things together, but this is, this is my suggestion tonight. And I don't know if two weeks is a reasonable, we, we continue the public hearing for two weeks and we can argue with two weeks, three weeks, four weeks, whatever. Let the Cove Committee have a chance to weigh in. See if they do it, see if they don't do it. I'd also like to have the Waterways Committee weigh in on the concept of expansion because if we're going to throw that at them and we're going to have the Cove Committee give an opportunity to weigh in on the process and fairness to the Waterway Committee, I'd like to see what their thought process is. Come back here and figure out what direction we may want to go in between disbanding, maintaining, adding to the waterways, or are we going to disband and then in a set period of time, create another committee, which is obviously not, you know, we get rid of one committee, we had another committee. But I do think we all recognize that we want to have that representation to the fishing industry present in our governmental form and we do not want to lose that. So how do we, how do we still provide that voice? Does that, because removing that voice in its entirety is not part of my master plan here. So those are just my general thoughts and Dean.
Mr. Chairman, I can support a two-week delay on this and I'll offer a motion in a second. I just wanted to add a suggestion that when the Waterways Committee considers this within the next two weeks, that one of the options for them and beyond, besides expanding their committee is to create a, a subcommittee as an advisory body to which they could add representation that are not members of their, their main committee.
I'm fine with that.
Consider.
As long as we have a discussion on all elements, I'm perfectly fine with that.
So, Mr. Chairman, I, I move that we continue the public hearing for two weeks, whatever that date is.
All right. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All right. All those in favor? Select Board Member DeCastro?
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis?
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens?
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell?
Aye.
And Select Board Member Metter says aye. So in two more weeks, we'll resume this conversation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stuart. Public comment, public comment on the business agenda. And once again, I'm going to note, the two items where I might allow public comment during the item is item E, stepping stone road property, and item G, the expansion of the sequential and aging Board of Directors. So outside of that, is there any public comment on the printed agenda from those in-house tonight?
Mr. Chairman.
No one. Is there anyone in the online audience who would like to speak? No one. Is there anyone in the online audience who would like to speak?
There's a hand up.
Mr. Westgate is participating.
Mike, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Great. I want to speak briefly on the Sears Road Town Landing.
Actually, Mike, I'm going to interrupt one second. Yeah, there we go. Now we can see your face. Thanks.
It might seem like a small item, but the abutter has erected a fence 200 feet long and three feet high. That did provide, that basically takes away parking for 15 cars, and it basically makes the town landing much, much less useful than it is right now. And I raise it as a, as a precedent, because if other town landings could be diminished by abutters putting up fences, and in this case, he's putting up bushes as well as fences, the town landings are one of the precious resources of Chatham, and, and we really cannot permit this fence to stand. And I would urge the selectmen to deal from a position of strength, and be prepared, if necessary, to go to eminent domain to take the 600 square feet and, and keep the integrity of the Sears Road Town Landing. I have had some experience with, with eminent domain and another, in another life, and I'd be happy to work with any selectman or town staff to, to talk about it, if that's appropriate.
All right, thank you for your input. Any additional comment online?
Not at this time.
All right, we're going to move to our regular business agenda this evening. First item is A, renew Chatham Shellfish, Chatham Aquaculture Lease, George Shellfish and our Shellfish Constable Renee Gagné, and, or, this hand.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Stephen Wright, South Chatham.
Renee Gagné, Shellfish Constable. So Steve is before you, seeking his renewal for the grant for the Chatham Shellfish Company. At last, he was before you, we raised that from a three-year renewal to a five-year renewal, and it's been five years.
All right. Thank you for your consideration.
All right, questions or comments from the board? Shereen?
So you've had the grant, the grant's historically been since 1970, 76 or so.
76, yes.
Yeah, so, all right. I happened to be out on your grant a couple of weeks ago, and this is a really interesting operation that, that Stephen has out there, and I'm very supportive of renewing his, his grant. I think that he employs some people in town, he also provides resources for the town. Renee, can you explain that clutch, the clutch bag stuff that, that Stephen provides for us as?
Well, not so much that, but Steve and, and John do donate oysters to the town's propagation program on an annual basis. This year, we are experimenting with collecting seed on spat hats, but that's, that's a new project that we're working on to see if it's actually a possibility. But he's been, he's been very beneficial to the town, and, and folks who are oystering are, are enjoying Steve's oysters.
Just a question, because a lot of people are going to ask, why isn't there any more aquaculture in town than there is just this one business?
Well, currently, we have a prohibition within our regulations, and it's existed since the 1990s, and there's a long history for why that, that, that regulation was, was adopted. So at this point, there is, there is a prohibition, so that's why there's no new grants in town.
Thank you. I was going to make a motion, but I think there will probably be other questions.
Go ahead, go ahead, make a motion.
I move that we renew and sign the agriculture lease for the grant number one and number one A for Oyster River, and it's to John Richards and Stephen Wright.
Correct.
Second.
All right, further discussion? Dean?
Thank you. I, I'm supportive of this. I just really had a question. I think, Renee, for you, we received an updated version of the agreement this afternoon, indicating the annual grant renewal fee. How is that determined? I know it's per acreage, but the dollar amount?
That's actually set by the state.
Okay.
And it's $25 per acre. There's been discussion about raising that for years, but that's been the, the rate for many years.
Okay. I just called your attention in paragraph 17 of the, of the license, I think there's an unnecessary, an extraneous word in the second sentence, says the selectboard shall commit annually and the necessary fee to the tax collector for payment. I think the word "and" probably should be stricken before we sign the agreement.
Sure.
All right, thank you.
All right, additional comments? Jeff?
Thank you, Corey. I just had a quick question. You, you cultivate and raise and sell oysters commercially. How about blue mussels, cohogs, you know, soft-shell clams?
So we don't actively cultivate soft-shell clams and mussels on the lease site, and we have in the past cultured cohogs. However, the primary animal that we culture is the eastern oyster. It's really what we're tool to grow out there. The cohogs take quite a, quite a long time to get to market, so we focus pretty much exclusively on the oyster at this point. However, we do operate a wholesale facility where we wholesale and retail other local shellfish, wild-caught mussels and cohogs and steamers.
And where's that located?
Barn Hill Landing.
Barn Hill Landing, okay.
At the Shannys.
And, and the grant is pretty close to the channel going into Oyster Pond. You keep clear of that pretty, pretty?
The, the channel is, the grant mark, is marked about every 50 feet along that demarcation with the channel.
Okay. I'm very supportive of renewing this as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Additional comments? Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, Select Board Member De Castro?
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis?
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens?
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell?
Aye.
And Select Board Member Metter says aye. Good luck with that.
Thank you very much.
We continue. Good luck with that.
Appreciate it.
Next, seasonal shellfish area openings. Renee, again?
Yes, hello again. I'm here to seek your approval for the big opening of all of our final seasonal areas, and that will be on December 1st, which is this Friday.
All right. Jeff, we do the honors.
Well, Corey, I certainly will. Shellfish Rules and Regulations, November 28, 2023, open effective December 1, 2023. The waters and flats of Taylor's Pond, north of a line drawn across the mouth of the pond, are open to the taking of shellfish by permit holders until further notice. Sign the selectboard. Shellfish Rules and Regulations, November 28, 23, open effective December 1, 2023. The Oyster Pond, east of a line from Kelly Landing to Long Point, is open to the taking of shellfish by permit holders until further notice. Sign the selectboard. Shellfish Rules and Regulations, November 28, 23, open effective December 1, 2023. The waters and flats of Muddy Creek, southwest of a line drawn across the mouth of the creek, as defined at low tide, and northeast of the Route 28 Bridge, are open to the taking of shellfish by permit holders until further notice. Sign the selectboard. Shellfish Rules and regs, November 28, 23, open effective December 1, 23. The waters and flats of Mill Creek, north of a line drawn from the western breakwater to the eastern breakwater at the mouth of Mill Creek, and south of a line drawn across the mouth of Taylor's Pond, are open to the taking of shellfish by permit holders until further notice. Sign the selectboard. Shellfish Rules and regs, November 28, 23, open effective December 1, 23. The water, flats, and all tributaries of Champlain Creek, northwest of a line drawn from the outermost piling at the town boat ramp, northeasterly to the "no shellfishing" sign in the marsh on the opposite shore, are open to the taking of shellfish by permit holders until further notice. Sign the selectboard. And finally, Shellfish Rules and Regs, November 28, 23, open effective December 1, 23. The waters and flats of Bucks Creek, north of a line across the mouth of the creek, and east of a line across the mouth of Cockle Cove Creek, are open to the taking of shell, shellfish by permit holders, except for Ron Bergstrom, until further notice. Sign the selectboard. We strike, except for Ron Bergstrom. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you for reading those notices.
Welcome.
Want to entertain a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
I move that we approve the seasonal shellfish area openings as recommended by the Shellfish Constable.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, further discussion? All those in favor, Select Board Member De Castro?
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis?
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens?
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell?
Aye.
And Select Board Member Metter says aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll pass that message along.
All right. Item C, consider use of town resources on December 31, 2023, for the Chatham First Night Committee. Mr. Paul Stuka? Yes, Paul?
Thank you for having us on the agenda tonight. We appreciate it. I believe you've all seen a letter that I sent, dated November 6, to the selectboard, as well as the town manager. Just hitting the highlights of that letter, this will be our 33rd year during First Night here in Chatham, and I think in the past, there were 350 or 400 First Nights around the country, and maybe there are 35 left at this point. So Chatham is one of the few places where we've continued to have an active First Night for 35 years. So thank you for the support of the town in that. This year will look very similar to last year. The changes will be, we'll have 13 new acts for a total of something close to 70 acts this year. We will go to 10:00 PM, as opposed to 9:00 PM last year. We will have our headquarters probably back at the old building, thanks to Ms. Wyckoff again for supporting us and having that. And the fireworks will be at 6:30 PM, following the noise parade, which will begin at 6, which is always a popular activity in town. And hopefully, the weather is better than it was last year, which was a very miserable night to have fireworks, and we had to move to the next night. So we're hoping for better weather this time. But that was the major changes. The two updates I would make to the letter that I sent to you is, we have been informed that the town plans to use the area to the right of Town Hall for the buoy holiday tree that's going there, we believe, and we had suggested in the letter that we might put an ice sculpture there. Would defer to the town on that, and we would remove that request for an ice sculpture on that property, leaving the only request for town property with an ice sculpture being the library. The second item that I would update is, we have always had a friendly request from the committee to use the restrooms, that they be open and be clean for the day of First Night in the evening, and I received notification from the town this year that you no longer have, or the town no longer has, in-house custodial services. And it was suggested that we hire an outside firm, recommended by the town, for the total of $1,500 to keep those restrooms clean. And certainly, as a committee, we will do whatever's necessary for the clientele of First Night to be, for their convenience, and to, to certainly provide for them that night. But we would also request that the town consider having those open in any case, and I'm not sure what arrangements could be made, but my understanding is that they will be open at the town's purview, and we will work with the town, however is suggested by this committee.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. I guess the one question, the buoy tree is up. I know that, because they were putting it up just before the gusty weather.
Okay, I haven't seen it yet.
There is enough room, I think, I believe, they at least left enough room for our ice sculpture, so the lawn is, has, we've got enough space. So I don't think removing an ice sculpture option at the corner near the buoy is necessary.
Okay.
I think, I think we have plenty of room to do that.
Well, if it looks like we have the budget to do that, then we'll add another ice sculpture.
And then you mentioned, you did mention the custodial fee on the restrooms, because I know, I do know that's a new line item this year. And, you know, the town manager and I have discussed a little bit about this, and probably the board was to discuss a little bit of it. It's an item that clearly you guys are willing to absorb, but I just don't know if it's fully, in fairness, to put the complete burden of that on the First Night Committee. It is a facility that I would assume, you know, it benefits the citizens, the merchants. It would be open anyway, and there's a $1,500 price tag associated with the custodial fees of it that, you know, there's, that you, you guys maybe have to pay for. I know you guys do pay for multiple, you know, you know, items, details, or whatever. So I guess the only thing I would want to throw for discussion is, is the full balance of the custodial fees for a, the restaurant facilities, something we should expect from the First Night Committee, or if we should consider any type of portion of it, or, so that's, that's a question I'm throwing out to the board. I think we should make some kind of agreement on that one myself. Thoughts? Mike?
I agree.
Okay.
I agree. I mean, it should be open, we should pay. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd hate to see this be a detriment to, to, to the committee, and, and, you know, this is a big, a very big event for the town, and, and they do such fabulous jobs. So I think we should discuss how we would possibly split that fee with them, if we have the funds to do so.
I'm okay with that as well.
Could we figure out some kind of, what would be, what would be a realistic or potential arrangement we could, we could offer?
So I certainly understand the board's concern about this, as well as our great partnership that we have with the First Night Committee. I think the only thing that, it's, it's halfway through the fiscal year, so I, I think, because it wasn't technically anticipated, that if we need to, if there's a, if there's a budget shortfall at the end of the year under the, the custodial contract, then we might have to seek other Fink Commerce or fund transfer, a budget adjustment at town meetings. So again, we, we try not to overexpend our funds, but certainly understand the community value of this. So just wanted to let the board know about that.
So is the board's consensus that the town pick it up in full, or are we splitting it, or the town picks it up in full?
Yes.
All right?
Yeah, yes.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, Shereen?
I have a question.
Yes.
How many buttons do you sell again?
In the past, we have sold as many as 6,000. In the last couple of years, we, last year, I believe the number was about 4,800. People tend to be waiting longer, checking the weather, and of course, last year was really a washout in terms of the weather. So I think that probably hurt us by four or 500 button sellers, button holders. But, you know, we'd like to sell 6,000, but realistically, we're probably in that $5,000 range, a $5,000 but, $5,000 button range. And we broke even last year. We had a very good year on contributions last year. Grants, we did very well on grants as well, but a number of the members of the community stepped up, and despite the fact we sold four or 500 fewer buttons than we expected, we were still able to break even, so.
Well, thank you very much for that.
Okay, well, entertain a motion. Dean?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the use of town-owned resources and services and the requests from the, from Chatham First Night Activities on December 31, 2023, with the addition of the contribution to the restroom facilities, as we received consensus on tonight.
All right, do I hear a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor, Select Board Member De Castro?
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis?
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens?
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell?
Aye.
And Select Board Member Metter says aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have a series of special one-day alcohol permits. I think before we get into the body of this, Shauna and Police Chief Anderson, were you going to do a little presentation, I believe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Just a little background of why we're here tonight. The Merchants Association hosted Oktoberfest in October, and as far as we could see, the event was a, was a total success. There was some concerns from the public that made its way to the police department and the selectboard. So after that, we had a short meeting with the town manager, myself, Ms. Neely, and some other members of the board, with some members of the Oktoberfest and the Merchants Association. We just addressed some of the concerns, just to really make sure that everybody stays on the path because of the number of the one-day alcohol permits that were issued. The, the concerns were some of the open containers on, on the Main Street, some of the serving practices inside some of the establishments, some of the, the businesses. So at that meeting, we suggested that in advance of the holiday stroll, that we would attend the Merchants' most recent meeting, which we did virtually. It was probably one of the highest-attended meetings, and that was probably because of... It was probably one of the highest-attended meetings, and that was probably because of Ms. Neely. But again, we reminded them of, of their obligations and their requirements and that we take this seriously. I hate to use this catchphrase, but we, we just want to make sure that the, the holiday stroll does not turn into the holiday stroll pub crawl. I was able to take the temperature in the room of last Select Board meeting. I noticed that it was, there was a lot more questions asked about the individual permits, whether they, you know, the opening, starting times or the closing times. It just, it was refreshing to me that there was a little bit more attention instead of the just streamlining of the permits going through. It's a concern that I have. We, we still want to have a nice, safe holiday event for everybody. Before I turn this over to Shauna, I, I do just want to say, from what my position as, as Police Chief is, we have a lot of discretion when it comes to enforcing alcohol in town. I reminded everybody in the Merchants, and I'll remind all of you again, that there is a bylaw that allows us to arrest. It's an arrestable bylaw if there's an open container in, in public in town. Again, that's, that's something that we don't want to use. We want to use a lot of discretion. We'd rather have education be one of the tools in the tool belt as opposed to arrest. But there are a lot of applications this year. We don't anticipate any problems, but we just felt that it was our obligation to just bring it to your attention that I think we should get out in front of it and just give a, a nice, gentle reminder to everybody that this, of, of what this is and, and what it, and what it's not.
I just wanted to, to thank the Merchants in the chamber for having us at the meeting. I think it was productive and it was a, a great opportunity to engage in some of that education piece. And I just wanted to, to remind the board that these are completely at your discretion. You are the only approval needed for these. There's no approval needed by the state. So it's, it's completely at your discretion whether or not you choose to approve or disapprove any of the applications.
Questions from the board? Mike?
Duly noted, and thank you. My question is, and this really goes forward, and, and maybe you've already started it, that there be a, a, a very rigorous record kept of reports of, of issues. And I think the issues, as I understand, or as I think about it, and I, I noticed, I mean, it's almost, you know, you can go right down Main Street on the 8th of December on the holiday stroll and pretty much go in maybe every other, but there are plenty of opportunities to get a drink. And I think the, the regulations, that it stay in the premises, that it be a, a very small offering and that, that it be limited to, you know, maybe even one to a customer, but certainly two. And that to the extent it comes to our attention, that there is, there is anything other than rigorous compliance, that there's a record kept to that, and that influences the next time somebody comes to ask. And I know that's a bit of an administrative complexity, but that, I mean, just making it known that this is in contemplation or will be the, the, the routine going forward, I hopefully would help.
It is and has been. We do maintain records. I will say, we didn't get a lot of complaints for Oktoberfest or the events before that. The, the, really, the concern that was brought to the board's attention wasn't really a specific complaint about a certain violation. I will add, just to show you what our playbook is going to be for that night, we're, we're going to have the usual amount of detailed police officers who will be assisting with the, the parade and the traffic. But I've increased the amount of Main Street Foot Patrol officers. And, and quite frankly, some of their primary duties are going to be inspections and enforcement.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
All right. We'll take the first request tonight. Chatham Garden Club at 347 Stage Harbor Road on Saturday, December 2nd, 2023. We have a representative. Good evening.
Betty Hayner, 16 Sofa Springs, representing the Chatham Garden Club. We would like to have a one-day liquor permit for our Festival of Trees that is scheduled to be held at the Atwood House on Saturday, December 2nd.
Questions or comments from the board? Shereen?
Well, I have a comment. I just want to say thank you for the beautification you do for the town. Were you guys out doing the decorations this week?
Well, we did Town Hall.
I saw, yeah.
We're not finished. It looks a little, it, it will be fixed up.
Great. So this is going to be held at the barn area of the Atwood House?
Right.
And, and you have a limited number of drinks. It's during the event. The event's two hours.
That's right, five to seven.
Five to seven. And how many ti, how many years have you been doing the Festival of Trees there?
Well, we haven't done them for the last 10 years.
Okay.
Basically, the market, not that many people were there to buy Christmas trees. So we're hoping to bring it back once again. At one point, it had been a highlight of the holiday season.
I remember as a, as a private citizen donating a decorated tree to the event.
We'll have 26 decorated Christmas trees by members, but also by local designers. The person from CBI has donated. We have a lot going this time, not just small, big trees, white trees, flock trees. So we all hope you'll come.
I'm going to move approval of, of, of a one-day alcohol permit for alcohol beverages to Betty Hayner on behalf of the Chatham Garden Club for Saturday, December 2nd, 2023, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM at 347 Stage Harbor Road, Atwood House Museum for the Festival of Trees event.
All right. Do we hear a second?
I can.
All right. All those in favor, Select Board Member Castro?
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis?
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens?
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell?
Aye.
And Select Board Member Metter says aye. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next, Chatham Walkers at the Chatham Community Center at 712 Main Street on Tuesday, December 5th, 2023, from 4:00 to 8:30 PM.
Good evening. Mary Ellen Lorafis, representing the Chatham Walkers. This is our annual holiday party. It's a potluck. We go set up around 4 o'clock, get decorated and get all the food put out, and we are cleaned up and gone by 8:30. It's all senior citizens and people bring beer and wine, as well as the food that they're contributing for people to all share in. It's upstairs in the large community room.
All right. You're going to miss watching our meeting.
Perhaps they can patch us in.
Mr. Chairman, I move to grant a special one-day liquor license to Mary Ellen Lorafis, I'm sorry.
Lorafis.
Lorafis, on behalf of the Chatham Walkers for Tuesday, December 5th, 2023, from 4:00 PM to 8:30 PM at the Chatham Community Center, and to further grant permission to possess, consume alcohol on town property as associated with this permit. Folks have done this for a number of years.
Do we hear a second? All right. All those in favor, Select Board Member Castro?
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis?
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens?
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell?
Aye.
And Select Board Member Metter says aye. Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Lola Mare LLC at 782 Main Street on Friday, December 8th, 2023, from 12:00 to 8:30 PM. It's a, we had, the 12 to 8:30 is a correction from what was printed in our agenda. Do we have a representative?
Yeah. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
And, and see me? I don't know if you can see me.
We can see you, yes.
Hi, I am Jennifer Hunt, co-owner of Lola Mare, located at 782 Main Street, requesting a one-day alcohol permit for the Christmas stroll.
Oh, you went mute. You went mute.
Oh, hello?
Yep, you're back.
Sorry, I don't know what happened. I don't know how much of that you caught. Should I start again?
Please.
My name is Jennifer Hunt. I'm co-owner of Lola Mare, located at 782 Main Street. We are requesting a one-day permit for alcohol for the Christmas stroll on December 8th, next Friday. We opened our doors in May of this year, so we're new to this process, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. For clarification, your request for time is 12:00 PM to 8:30 PM? Because we have a amended, or a little note in our, in our packet that it was, it was changed from eight to 8:30. So from clarificate, or confirmation on that?
I mean, honestly, I, I don't think we're even going to be, we're not in this, right in the strip. So whatever, it, it doesn't really matter because we're probably not going to be open until eight either.
All right. Well, thank you. Questions or comments from the board? Anyone? Mike?
No, no, I, other than, is it eight or is it 8:30?
I think, I think, I think the applicant is fine with eight or 8:30, so.
Yeah, whatever you have is fine.
I think it's 8:00.
If it's.
Okay. Okay. Yep, we have 8:30.
And what, I'm sorry, and now the start time you have is at what time?
Noon time.
Noon.
Noon.
Okay. 12 to eight, yeah, for sure. That's, we, we won't be open past eight.
All right. So I think that's, 12 to eight is the request. Entertaining motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to grant one-day special permit for wine and malt beverages only to Jen Hunt on behalf of Lola Mare LLC for Friday, December 8th, 2023, from 12:00 PM to 8:00 PM at, for service at 782 Main Street, Chatham.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Okay. Further discussion? All those in favor, Select Board Member Castro?
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis?
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens?
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell?
Aye.
And Select Board Member Metter says aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, Chatham Threadworks at 400 Main Street on Friday, December 8th, 2023, from 4:00 to 8:00 PM. Do we have a representative? Board want to act on this?
I, I don't see Ms. Favion. The agenda report has her requesting wine and malt beverages only at Threadworks on December 8th from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM, located at 400 Main Street. I don't see her here.
I'm, I'm fine with moving on, but I'm putting a little asterisk note that maybe moving forward next year as we do the processes, that if we are going to approve any of these, that we have a representative present for next year's.
We need to discuss it, or can we make a motion to make that a fact? Because I think it's really important that the representative from, from any of the businesses come to, to tell us, at least. I think it's great for them to promote their business, number one, but it's also shows responsibility around that this is a serious application. You just want to make a consensus?
A consensus, I think we're going to do a debriefing of the event anyway. That would include something like this.
They move an agenda item to, to place.
I fully support an agenda item to, for, to include that and other related discussions. So does the board have a inkling to discuss this night? Dean?
I'm going to offer a motion.
All right.
I'm going to second.
Mr. Chairman, I move to grant a one-day special permit for wine and malt beverages only to Jennifer Favion on behalf of Chatham Threadwork for Friday, December 8th, 2023, from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM for service at 400 Main Street, Chatham.
Second.
Second. All right. Further discussion? All those in favor, Select Board Member Castro?
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis? Select Board Member Dykens?
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell?
Aye.
And Select Board Member Metter says aye.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, just one, we do have Jen. I, I see that she's on the call, but for some reason, there's an issue with her participating.
Well, she got her.
Okay. Well, I do appreciate her trying to sign in too. That's okay.
So I just, just if I might?
Yes.
We have, in the past, the reason why I think it was fair to take that vote, in the past, we have approved these types of applications without folks being.
Correct.
I think it's unfair. But going forward, it's a different, different deal.
Right.
I, I agree.
Okay, thank you.
Portson Company at 595 Main Street for Friday, December 8th, 2023, from 4:00 to 9:00 PM. Do we have a representative? All right. Back to the board.
I'll, I'll, I'll move to grant a one-day special permit for wine and malt beverages only to Lisa Lynch on behalf of Portson Company for Friday, December 8th, 2023, from 4:00 PM to 9:00 PM for service at 590, 595 Main Street, Chatham.
All right. Second?
Second.
All those in favor, Select Board Member Castro?
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis?
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens?
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell?
Aye.
And Select Board Member Metter says aye. Mark August at 490 Main Street for Friday, December 8th, 2023, from 4:00 to 9:00 PM. Do we have a representative? Nope. All right. Board discretion again? Anyone entertain the motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to grant a one-day special permit for wine and malt beverages only to Corinne Blakney, Blake Kne on behalf of Mark August for Friday, December 8th, 2023, from 4:00 PM to 9:00 PM at, at 490 Main Street, Chatham.
Second.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, Select Board Member Castro?
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis?
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens?
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell?
Aye.
And Select Board Member Metter says aye. Chatham Rotary Club, 548 Main Street on Friday, December 8th, 2023, from 4:00 to 9:00 PM. Do we have a representative?
I am here.
Good. Were we have questions?
Hi, my name is Ted Atwood. I'm representing the Rotary Club of Chatham for a one-night liquor license to serve just wine, like mulled wine. To raise money, it'll be our final charity event of the year. So I've got a few other Rotarians here with me. And we do, this will be our fourth fundraiser, so I'll really use the money.
So several questions. This is a slightly different model than all the other ones on our, our evening. This is actually vending and sales. It'll be a cash sale of, of product. Can you talk about what your setup's going to look, your proposed setup is?
Yeah, we're really, so it's a tent. It's on the property of the bank. We have an agreement with the bank. It's, think of it as a commemorative mug with one drink for, for your purchase. So we're really, it'll say Chatham Stroll. It'll have the year on it. And people will just come into the tent. They won't be able to leave, of course, with any alcohol. And they'll have the option for cider.
You're proposing a limit per drink?
Just one. We're not there to sell spirits so much as we are there to raise money.
I'll, I'm going to, I'm going to be, I'll be, I'll be first. I want to throw it out there. I have a little hesitation on this one, only because of the kind of temperature on the event and how it's shaping up, where we have most of the applications for the downtown area are brick and mortars, offering a little two-ounce or four-ounce glass with food and their shoppers and whatever. The fundraising is great. But would next year, are we going to have two or three more opportunities for people to sell? And as the chief has stated, we want to keep this as a, as a fun event, and we don't want to drive it into a direction that we're having, again, I hate to use the, you know, a holiday bar crawl or, so, you know, the, the holiday cheer get very festive. But I have a little pause on this one, but I just want to kind of get the sense of the board before we can go any further. So, Shereen?
So Ted, so you're going to have a mug?
Yes.
That's a rotary, rotary mug? And, and so the person will walk out of the building, or out of the tent with that mug, they'll take that away as a takeaway?
Yes.
And that's the fundraiser?
Yes.
So how are, how would you propose that you're going to make sure that nobody's walking around with the mug? And, you know, walks out and they still have alcohol or liquid, you know, like alcohol in that mug?
Yeah, well, first, there'll be one cup. These are smaller mugs. Second, it'll be gated, so they won't be able to leave. The idea isn't to sell a ton of liquor here. It's to, it's to raise money through the mugs.
What about just selling the mugs without, without the?
It's an option. It wouldn't be as much fun. So in the spirit of the holiday and mulled wine, it seemed to fit the intentions, something warm. You go into a tent, you warm up.
I'd like to hear from the chief as to how he sees this might be different or be problematic for, for us. I, I just, it is a different model to what we're used to. I mean, we usually see festivals and this kind of thing.
Before we hear from the chief, can I just ask one question? How much are you charging or how much is the contribution for the mug?
$15.
Okay. All right. So I, and I, I'll, I'll state the inference that I draw, which is unlikely somebody buys two. They're buying one mug and that's it.
We could easily limit the mug purchase to one full mug. Happy to sell empty mugs. Happy to sell empty mugs.
Okay, um, first, let me just add a disclaimer, I, I, I appreciate the group, um, I respect their fundraising, I think they, they're a great group in town, uh, I respect all the members of the group, I'm familiar with, with all of them. But I think this individual request has to be decided on whether it's gonna be approved a little bit or denied a little bit, because if, if we're talking about the, the selling of alcohol in any type of container with a gated, uh, curtilage and somebody not allowing someone to leave or enter, I, I believe that we already have requirements for, for example, when we, when we reserve the town hall parking lot, they have to be tip certified, and there are, there are all these other requirements that the vendors for Oktoberfest, uh, have to follow. Again, if, if, if you're asking me for my opinion, I think this is a little bit outside of the normal, uh, spirit of the, I get it, um, but if, if the approval process is gonna be granted, I would ask that they follow the, you follow the same requirements as everybody else as far as, uh, for Oktoberfest, they had, you know, people watching the entrance, a closed area, they were tip certi, tip certified. I don't, I don't want to say that, to use your term, you're happy to sell an empty mug. I'd be happy to have you selling a mug with probably something other than alcohol in it. But again, I, I don't make the decision, this is just my opinion.
And it'll be an option, it, it's an option for people to choose not to have alcohol.
I just, I would just like the board to look at this as a, as one of those moments that this could be the, the linchpin of, of what happens next and the inch that goes a mile, not with your group, but with, but with somebody else at the next event or, or down the road, that's all.
Dean?
Yeah, I just, one question first, uh. Thank you. One question first, the, the, the name of the supplier is, has been, it was crossed out. It says Cape Cod Wholesale Wine and Spirit, is that your supplier?
No, it'll be Luke's.
Luke's, okay.
They're on the list.
Okay. I, I, I mean, I share this concern, the concerns that have been expressed, um, by the chair and others and the chief. Because this is, I had a conversation with the, the licensing agent, this, this would be a precedent for the future, depending on how we handle this. Uh, and no one is taking away the great contribution that Rotary makes, and they're a great service organization locally and that, and internationally. But I'm a little concerned because it's not associated with the, you know, the establishment sale of merchandise as with the various shops in town, this is basically setting up a tent downtown.
Well, well, not, you know, keep that line of thought going, the idea is to sell commemorative mugs and, and just fill them with a little spirit on the night.
And that's a good, that's a good point, I mean, that's, that's sort of analogous to some of the things that occurred at the Oktoberfest, I think. I mean, I don't know how I come down with this, you do say you're going to have, um, tips trained people. Will they be certified, I guess they have to be certified to be?
Yeah, you get certified online.
No more than, uh, it says no more than two mugs per customer, so does that mean no more than two drinks per customer?
Well, no more than, sell no more than two mugs, but only one drink.
Only one drink. Okay. I'm not sure how I come down, I, I share the concerns, but I'll wait to hear if anyone else has any other comments.
Well, I, I, I'm gonna ask three questions here and then let you work with it. I, I, are, are we in agreement that the, um, the requirements that the chief outlined for other circumstances that are analogous, you would comply with?
Yes.
Okay, so the, the two questions, I want to ask, um, one, what's the effect on your, your eliomocinary purpose, uh, to, um, eliminate alcohol? In other words, sell cider or whatever, but no alcohol? Related question, um, would be to sell mugs and as the, the, the businesses do, hand out alcohol in, in cups, subject to the same rules and regulations that they generally do. And I, I realize I'm fussing with your model here, but I'm trying to really understand what's going on here, that's all.
Yeah, so following existing precedents, we didn't realize this was such a controversial topic. It wasn't apparent to us when we made the one day liquor license request that this would be extraordinary. So we'll start there. It's a small club, so this is an easy fundraiser for us. If you've been to any of our other fundraisers there, fairly large lifts, we have to get chowder together or chili or pancakes, these are big events, they take a lot of work. This one's pretty easy, you pop up a tent, you put some sides on, you heat it up, you sell some mugs. People get behind the idea that they get to walk out with a commemorative mug for the year, and hopefully they come back. It's a first time for us, so I don't know what the, the impact would be, because we hadn't tried it before. So maybe there's no impact. But at this point, I don't think that we're irresponsible or that we've shown to be irresponsible in the way that we've run any of our events. So I, if it's declined, it would only be because the town feels uncomfortable with a precedent setting event, which we did not know was precedent setting. If it's accepted, then we sell some mugs, we raise some money, and people walk out the door with one cup of mulled cider.
Jeff?
I just, Chief, how, how is this any different than what occurs at, at Oktoberfest? And, and could we put the same parameters, ask for the same rules and regs that we do at Oktoberfest for this particular case? And then I, I don't, I don't, and I don't mind Mr. Shell's suggesting that, hey, sell the mug and we give him a four cup, four ounce cup of wine or mulled cider or whatever, and call it a day. And I'm fine with that, it's the same thing as everybody else is doing, except you're selling a mug without any alcohol. I'm good with that.
As long, in my opinion, as long as the same requirements are met here as the, the food trucks or the vendors at either the impudent oyster lot or the town hall lot, um, the, the only thing that I would just really want to bring home is when you say, you know, they get to leave, or they get to, they get to go out the door with a mug, it, it just has to be an empty mug.
All right, we agree, we agree on that, yeah.
Yeah. I'm gonna make a comment then, Shereen, like, so I, I think this is a precedent, precedent issue. It is very different than Oktoberfest, in the sense that Oktoberfest, we took the parking lot, we have an area that's designated safety, you know, policed, patrolled, where this is a single tent, um, it's gonna be hard, harder to, you know, if it gets really busy, and I, hopefully, you sell a lot of mugs, um, that open container issue does concern me. And I, and I do think you're gonna have some idiot pouring a drink into the cup as they're walking around. Sadly, it is, they're gonna, we're gonna see red solo cups, we're, we're, we're gonna have some issues like we do every year, hopefully we can minimize them. But I am concerned with the way the temperature is right now, that adding this type of element, which you guys have stepped into and have taken nothing away from the Rotary Club. I'd, I hope you guys can sell as many mugs as you want, but an alcohol element at this year's event, I can't support. Please, hot chocolate, do cider, whatever, sell cups, but the alcohol element for this year, based on the way things have been, the communications we've had, the outreach we've had, I'm gonna err on the side of precaution for the town and not support an alcohol element for this request for this year. I'm just gonna be very upfront with you guys. Shereen?
So there's no doubt that your organization does great things for the community, and you're a great community asset. I'm gonna weigh in, um, and agree with Corey on the fact that this is a precedent setting event. And though your intentions may be good for what you want to do, and, and it's a small, it's a small area, you've done your due diligence on a lot of the factors, I can see us having, next year, having several nonprofits wanting to do the same thing in, you know, or, or look at your format and say, oh, okay, well, this, oh, this is, could be a great fundraiser for us. So all of a sudden, Chatham's turning into, you know, the stroll's turning into something other than what it should be, which should be a nice event, and you can go down and have hot cider or, you know, a drink or something while you're shopping, but, um, I just, I'm too, I'm, I am too, as well, meaning as well, concerned about the, the precedent that this would set, when we really haven't talked about, you know, it as a group, what this would look like for, what's the impact gonna be? What, what are expectations on, on this, you know, going forward? That's, that's where I am, I, I really would love to say yes, but I, I, I don't wanna, I, I'm very nervous about the, the precedent that this is gonna set for right now, and then we have not set any policy around it.
Okay, so you're nervous about not the event itself, but the precedent itself it sets for future events? That's a tough one. I feel like we don't have an opportunity there to, to represent it the right way. And, and what if five other charitable groups decide to find a lot? By the way, do you know how hard it was to find a lot that would allow this? I had to go through the bank's due diligence, so it was very aggressive. And we're grateful for their, for their support. And we still have their support, and we still will do our best that night. But all I would suggest is, before we become the example, just consider what is the downside of what we're doing or others would do? And I, I mean, you could say it's other people walking around, but there, there's plenty of opportunities for them to find a drink. There's no shortage of places to drink. So as a result of that, we're not offering them more access to alcohol, we're just offering them another option.
Can I ask the chief a question?
If I could just jump in one more, uh, the thing that was not mentioned that was different about the chamber and the Oktoberfest in that outside area is that the, uh, chamber hired police details also to ensure that people didn't leave. So that, you know, in addition to my police officers walking Main Street, those two parking lots, the police details for the, not so much the, the, the serving enforcement, but the walking around enforcement, um, the, the chamber paid for the police details for that specific purpose.
All right, thank you. My question is, as you've mentioned a couple of occasions about the open container, if the empty cup is, you know, the cup is empty walking out of the venue, and some individual decides to put alcohol in it, and there's an incident, and there's an arrest, are they liable, or they have any, are they, any, how is that? Or it's kind of probably a case to case situation?
It would, it would be hard to prove where the alcohol came from, but it would, you could infer that it came unfortunately from his establishment because their name's on the cup.
Okay. I think, I just want to point that out, because I do think one of your, you and Shawna's kind of outreach to the community is if something happens, these are the consequences that each establishment may incur, that everyone should be aware of the situation, so.
Correct.
Again, wish you all the best of luck, I can't support the alcohol element for this, this year, um, I will sleep better. I'm, I'm a little nervous going into this year's, uh, holiday stroll in general, because this is the most one day alcohol permits we've had in a long time. Granted, a lot of them are coming from the fact that people are actually in compliance and asking for permission and doing it the right way, but, um, you know, fingers crossed that it goes over smoothly. But I do think, um, there's, there's a couple eyes, and, you know, we're gonna have, you know, more resources put out there that night, and, um, you know, I just, I hope that it, it stays a, a kind of a family friendly event with no, no hiccups, preferably, so. Uh, Dean?
Just a couple of questions, Chief, um, you indicated earlier, um, that at first night, you were gonna have, and this is not first night, but you were gonna have an abundance of, that's my word, of officers. Do you think you will have sufficient force out on December eighth to keep tabs on what's happening as best you can?
As it stands now, I don't see why we should be short in any areas, we should be fine.
Okay, um, so a couple of questions from Mr. Atwood, has Rotary, um, at its prior events ever served alcohol?
Yes.
And you come before us for permits?
No, 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 we're part of the VFW, and
Okay.
they took care of that.
Okay.
But I would point out also that this is not an uncommon Rotary event, these happen throughout the United States all the time. When I called to get the liability insurance modified to accommodate the bank, it took about three minutes.
Well, I was, that was gonna be my next question, would, would you be willing to add the town of Chatham as a, as an additional insured on your certificate of insurance?
Sure.
With respect to the precedent issue, and I mentioned it myself, um, yeah, it's a precedent for people applying, but if we should grant this, um, with the limitations and restrictions that the chief has outlined, and there are problems, we're not obligated, we haven't obligated ourselves to grant it in the future to anybody else, they can apply all they want. I think, um, we should discuss policy about, around this at some point when we do a, a re, a debrief of the, of the events for the holidays.
Debrief after the event is probably gonna be critical, and we have already discussed about all, all elements.
I'd, I'd be inclined to support it, uh, with the condition that, um, the town be named as a, as a certificate holder on the certificate of liability insurance, and with the, um, restrictions in place that have been outlined by the, the chief of police. So with that, I move to grant a one day special permit for wine and malt beverages only to Ralph T. Atwood on behalf of Rotary Club of Chatham for Friday, December eighth, two thousand and twenty-three, from four P M. to nine P M. for service at five forty-eight Main Street, Chatham.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, then, uh, further discussion, yes?
Just a comment, Chief, are you fine with this? I mean, you know, you've, you've expressed some deep concerns, but I, I'm, I'm not putting you on the spot because it's up to us to make that decision, but.
And again, I, I, I respect everybody in the room, um, if, if I was on the board, I would not vote for this.
Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna start the vote, no.
I, I'd just like to say, I, I am pained by the obvious, um, difference of opinion on the board, but I, I do want to say that I think that if we don't grant it, if we deny it, at least with respect to the alcohol, we're effectively making policy, as Dean suggested, if we grant it, and I hate to put it this way, but, but observe and, and call on you as a precedent setter, as, as, as number one, to, to be especially aware of what that means, um, that we'll have one case at least to look at, and if there's a problem, we, we can deal with it.
Okay, that's fair enough for me, I guess.
All right, I will start the vote, no. Select Board Member Shell?
Yes.
Dykens?
Aye, yes.
Davis?
No.
Anna Castro?
I'm the tiebreaker.
You're the tiebreaker.
I'm electing to vote against the chief's opinion, but in this case, I will.
Just for note, if the chief dismissed this comment, if he was on the board?
I know, that's what I'm referring to. I, I, I always have listened to the, our public safety chiefs. Aye.
All right, it passes three to two.
Thank you, thanks for the debate, I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Uh, next, Black Dog at six twenty-eight Main Street for Friday, December eighth, two thousand and twenty-three. Do we have a representative on line possibly?
Yes. Charmaine Curry?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Charmaine Curry, I'm the store manager of the Black Dog at six twenty-eight Main Street, and I would like to get one day alcohol permit for a sip and shop, um, and it will be from five to eight P M. I also did recently just get tip certified, so that, sorry for the glare, so that, um, I will be better, I'll have more knowledge of, because it's, it would be my first sip and shop, so just so I can have a better understanding of like the rules, regulations and laws surrounding it.
All right, well, thank you. Questions or comments from the board? Do we have a motion? Mike?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move to grant a one day special permit for wine and malt beverages only to Charmaine Curry on behalf of the Black Dog for Friday, December eighth, two thousand and twenty-three, from five P M. to eight P M. for service at five twenty-eight Main Street, Chatham.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, Select Board Member De Castro?
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis?
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens?
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell?
Aye.
And Select Board Member Metter says aye.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much, good luck.
Thanks.
Fisherman's Daughter at five twenty-one Main Street for Friday, December eighth, two thousand and twenty-three, from five to nine P M., um, see the representative on line?
Hello, I'm Taylor Brown from Fisherman's Daughter, five twenty-one Main Street, Chatham, and I'm a. I'm applying for a one day alcohol permit from 5:00 to 9:00 PM on December 8th.
Okay, questions or comments from the board? Motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to grant a one day special permit for wine and malt beverages only to Taylor Brown on behalf of Fisherman's Daughter LLC for Friday, December 8th, 23, from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM for service at 521 Main Street, Chatham.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Select board member DeCastro?
Aye.
Select board member Davis?
Aye.
Select board member Dykens?
Aye.
Select board member Shell?
Aye.
And select board member Metter says aye. Good luck, Taylor.
Thank you.
Pine Acres Realty at Compass, 509 Main Street for December 8th, 2023, from 6:00 to 7:45 PM.
Good evening. Shelby Shipman, representing Pine Acres Realty at Compass, requesting a one day alcohol permit for Friday, December 8th, 6:00 to 7:45 PM.
All right, questions from the board? Anyone entertain a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to grant a one day special permit for wine and malt beverages only to Lori Feeney Smith on behalf of Pine Acres Realty at Compass for Friday, December 8th, 2023, from 6:00 to 7:45 PM. That served for service at 509 Main Street, Chatham.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Select board member DeCastro?
Aye.
Select board member Davis?
Aye.
Select board member Dykens?
Aye.
Select board member Shell?
Aye.
And select board member Metter says aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
And last request of the evening is Where the Sidewalk Ends at 432 Main Street for Saturday, December 9th, 2023, from 1:00 to 3:00 PM. Do we have a representative? We do not, so back to the board.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
I move to grant a one day special permit for wine and malt beverages only to Caitlin Doggert on behalf of Where the Sidewalk Ends Bookstore for Saturday, December 9th, 2023, from 1:00 PM to 3:00 PM for service at 432 Main Street, Chatham.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second, but I have a question.
Okay, discussion, yep.
Typically, the book signings are outside. Is this an outside or inside event? Do we know?
This is.
I had no indication that it would be outside. Okay, all right.
It doesn't specify, no.
Well, we can caution them that they should do it inside, that they must do it inside. I think that licensing agent can communicate that, so.
Especially if they're going out, kind of checking things to see this, that evening. They're to their, to their benefit.
Yes.
All right, so motion? Second? Do we have a second?
Yeah, I was second.
Yep, okay.
So, well, I, I need to amend my motion to qualify it that the alcohol will be served and consumed indoors.
And I'm okay with that second.
All right, perfect. So we have a motion, we have amended motion, amended second. All those in favor? Select board member DeCastro?
Aye.
Select board member Davis?
Aye.
Select board member Dykens?
Aye.
Select board member Shell?
Aye.
And select board member Metter says aye. All right, so that does it for the one day alcohol permits. Next on the agenda is, let's see here, Stepping Stones Road Property. Next steps for the purpose of affordable and/or attainable housing and allocation of affordable housing trust and select board responsibilities. I will turn this over to the select board member Shell for presentation.
Yeah. This is a request that was developed in a, in an Affordable Housing Trust meeting a week or 10 days ago without, excuse me, specific focus on any particular property, although the agenda item identifies Stepping Stones as the, as the focus. There was a recognition in our discussion that the question of affordable housing versus something else was, was a, a line of potential demarcation for the jurisdictions of the select board on the one side and the Affordable Housing Trust Board on the other side. I, I think we recognized that, and I'm, when I say we, I'm speaking on behalf of the Affordable Housing Trust, that there was a need for not only clarification, but really a, a fundamental understanding between the Affordable Housing Trust Board and the select board as to what would be a good protocol for proceeding with the various projects that we have in front of us, the properties that we have on the, on the table, and, and we're all familiar with those. With respect to Stepping Stones, I think there is a recognition that while it's not decided or dictated, but that a, an effective use of that property to address the, the housing, the affordable housing, small A, needs and challenges of Chatham would almost certainly suggest contemplation of use of that property to build, again, affordable housing there, probably capital A, among other reasons, because the current zoning, which is, would be applicable in the case of, I'll call it attainable housing, anything that wasn't capital A, affordable housing, would be limited for that property, most likely to four units. If you use 40B to expand the capacity of that property to additional units beyond four, then you are looking at capital A affordable housing, excuse me. And so as a result of that conversation, we, as the Affordable Housing Trust Board, decided that it would be appropriate to put the question in front of this board, the select board, for mostly a conversation about how do we, how, how, what's a good way to proceed. I will conclude my presentation, my opening remarks, table setting, if you will, by adverting to the two legal opinions that Town Council submitted with respect to the respective jurisdictions as a matter of law of the two boards. And I'll just make the comment that his, I thought his, both of them were, were, were very helpful, but the second one that we received a day or two ago, I thought was particularly helpful in that what it basically said was that, and I'm summarizing probably, maybe doing a small amount of violence, but that the select board, and now I am focused on Stepping Stones, that the select board has control of the property because the town owns the property, and it is property that is in the, in the, in the housing jurisdiction because it was dedicated as such at town meeting pursuant to recommendation of this afford, of this select board. But what he also said was that there is flexibility as a matter of law for the two boards to come to a, an arrangement, if you will, that suits the purposes of both boards. I think my last point here would be simply that we need to find some sort of an understanding which is efficient and doesn't have the two boards tripping over one another or functioning in a very inefficient way because they're going back and forth and, and, and having conversations that duplicate work that's been done by the other. So I'll stop there and, and, and return the, the time.
All right, thank you for the opening present remarks. As I stated in the beginning of the meeting, I will ask for public comment, but at the moment, I'm gonna start with the board. So comments or questions from the board? Jeff?
Yeah, I, I just be honest with you, I never contemplated having as few as four units on that, on that property. So that's where I start. And in order to get more than four, I think we have to have a big A affordable. So that, those are my thoughts. I, I think we'd be not, we'd be limiting ourselves to, in the opportunity present there if we only contemplated four units. Feel pretty strongly about that.
Additional comment? I'll weigh in. I'm actually, I'm actually more of the opinion of four units. I think when we, then when the stepping stone, when we looked at the school committee, school, regional school committee looking at to, you know, declare that as excess inventory, you know, I'll go back a step even further, I thought the school should probably keep it at first potential school uses. They decided to move it forward. Their endorsement was housing, and at the time, the housing should be fitting in within neighborhood field. There's smaller houses, R20 zoning is, I think, very reasonable. It's not a huge parcel. I think if we are going to put housing on there, some housing that fits the neighborhood would be the best appropriate for the neighborhood. And I think R20 is not, is unreasonable, is not unreasonable. And I don't know if we go with 40B parameters going to a greater density, not knowing exactly what that density is, isn't it something that I would necessarily want to be supportive? So the four unit is something that I could definitely support. Going beyond that without a definitive number, it's hard to say I would support that because I don't want to go too dense to be, to be terribly transparent. So, Dean.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think when we've discussed this previously, when we've had some presentations from our housing director, we've seen models that had as many as seven or eight units, I think up to 12 units. I can't remember the exact direction we gave at our most recent conversation, but it wasn't for a huge number of units. And it is really not critical to me as, as to the, the category in which the occupants, the owners or renters fall, because as it has been pointed out to us by Carolyn McClellan, the tiers of income for affordable include what we would call workforce people. I would be concerned, obviously, about the number of units, because I would like to see it in keeping, to be in keeping with the neighborhood. I, I apologize because I didn't catch all of Mike's presentation, but I know you were referring to the legal opinions of Mr. Costello. And I would be more comfortable if the, this board continued as a player on this property and not fully surrender over to the Affordable Housing Trust, the control over the development, especially until we have a clearer picture of the number of units that are being contemplated. I guess that's my opening comment on it. I don't have much more to say at present time.
Okay. Additional comments at the moment?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, when I, when I look at all of our properties and what we're trying to achieve here, I look at the bigger picture of what, what is necessary. And, and what is necessary is obviously a lack of inventory, and I'm not as concerned about four. I'm, I would like to see it more dense. I don't think it's not keeping in the neighborhood to do something like that. Only down the road is, is, is some of our town projects that, that sort of reflect that look of some of the duplexes and, and, and the units. It's, it's an opportunity for the town to start putting people in homes and heads on beds, as they say. And, you know, I, I don't want us to feel limited. We, the whole, the whole state has a housing crisis. It's a, it's a problem. And, and, and I think we can do this with, with taste and understanding of, of, you know, with respect to, you know, number one, what we're trying to achieve, but number two, you know, that we are a small community and we like to have things that aren't large and in, in, on small pieces of property. I don't think these duplexes are offensive, or, you know, any denser housing scenarios would be offensive there. I think it would be fine. We, we've lived in a, or, you know, in a community that's had cottage colonies and whatnot, so it's not without keeping to have a more denser area.
Mike?
Yeah, just a couple of thoughts that I, I hope are responsive. First of all, I did, yes, Dean, advert to the two legal opinions, which I said I think are helpful. Secondly, I, I, I think that the, the one missing piece here is that, that needs to be at least taken into account is how do we, how do we finance the building of, I don't care whether it's four units, or eight, or seven, or two, or whatever, the money has to come from somewhere. The town is not going to do it itself. And I'm not suggesting that that dictates that we have to have any number of units on that, on that property. What I am saying is that we need to have a, a partner, and, and I hate to use the word, but basically a developer who can educate us as to what the, the financial realities are, and, and how do you get to where you want to get, whatever number of units is, and whoever, whatever the profile of the people that you want to accommodate in, in those units, which to some extent dictates what the, what the financing can look like. The, the last point I want to make here is that, and, and we get to that point essentially by issuing an RFP. And the RFP can be flexible in terms of, of, it doesn't have to say we're doing seven units and no other, but it has to have some flexibility that suggests that we are talking about a range and maybe a suggestion such as the test fit studies that we looked at from a conceptual point of view that allows us to begin engaging in a dialogue with somebody who is an expert and has the capacity to build. And somebody has to take the lead, not as a matter of control, but just as an administrative matter of going forward, constructing an RFP, and, and getting that out into the, into the industry and, and then beginning that dialogue. So I, the, the purpose here is, is to create an understanding of how we're going to accomplish those things in an efficient way. It is not to have an arm wrestling match over who controls anything. I, I, I do want to say one last thing for the benefit of everybody. Two members of this select board are members of the Affordable Housing Trust Board, and then there are five other members of the community who are experts in various fields on the Affordable Housing Trust Board.
Dean?
Thank you, Mike, for, for that clarification. And it is a good board. I, you know, we all participated in the selection of members. Can I ask a couple of questions of our?
Sure.
Housing director?
What's the, what is the, the timeframe going forward? So if, if an RFP is issued, is it issued in the name of the Affordable Housing Trust?
So, I guess that depends on our, our conclusions after discussion tonight. But right now, the property is, I believe it's officially, officially controlled by the select board. So typically, an RFP would be issued on behalf of the town of Chatham, but understanding that in this particular case, this property is under your control right now.
So, is it issued by, by the town acting through its town manager? Is that how that goes?
Yes, that's how we usually do it.
Okay. My second question, Gloria, is if the select board, you know, retains control of this property, does the process of the Affordable Housing Trust proceeding with the RFP process, does that, does that get complicated at all?
Well, you would retain control of this property if you decided that there was not going to be any affordable housing on it, that it was just going to be attainable housing. So as soon as you, as soon as you have some affordable component, then the Affordable Housing Trust would be involved. It could be like a joint project and joint oversight.
Well, that's the point of the second opinion from Mr. Costello, and he's on, on this call, I see. Because I think he says that if it's a mixed mixture, if it's a mixture of housing types, affordable and not affordable, then the select board could retain participation in that process.
You could. You don't have to, but you could.
No. Pat's on. Want to have Pat make a comment, maybe? Pat, you on? Pat's on. Want to have Pat make a comment, maybe? Pat, you on?
I do have a follow-up question when Pat is finished.
Good evening.
Good evening, Pat.
I think all of the statements that have been made to date have been very constructive, very helpful. This should be a collaborative process between the Affordable Housing Trust and the select board, if, in fact, there are going to be affordable housing or CPC funds dedicated to the development of the site. The selectments certainly were vested by town meeting with jurisdiction and control over the property. If there are no Affordable Housing Trust funds being utilized for the development of housing on the site, the select board could retain full control and jurisdiction over the process, all aspects. Where Affordable Housing Trust funds are going to be utilized, however, I think that the control somewhat follows the money. The Affordable Housing Trust doesn't have to play an active role in the proposal solicitation process or any aspect of the development. It can, however, it certainly has the statutory authority to do so. At a minimum, the Affordable Housing Trust would want to make sure there are appropriate safeguards in place to assure that any funds that it is devoting toward this project are utilized properly and for the proper purposes that are described in the statute, i.e. affordable housing for low and moderate income individuals. So, this is not an unusual, I don't want to call it a dilemma, but issue that the town is now facing. All of the guideline materials relative to municipal Affordable Housing Trust indicate that at the very outset, the ground rules should be established, the respective roles and responsibilities of the town players within a development project should be laid out and cast in stone, so that when you start moving forward, each individual board or officer of the town has a clear understanding of what their role is going to be in the project. So, it really comes down to the funding from the AHD. If it's going to be, at least partially or a component of the project is going to be affordable housing and funded by Affordable Housing Trust funds, it would have a role. It's up to the trust and the board of trustees to determine how that role will be exercised and what levels of security they'd want to impose.
So, Pat, when do the roles have to be determined? We're talking about a situation where an RFP is going to be issued. From my understanding, no funds will have been expended at that point or committed at that point, I don't think. Do we have to make that determination, that demarcation of roles before that RFP is issued?
I don't believe so. I believe that if the RFP is issued by the town manager, as it typically is, on behalf of the town of Chatham, it could be specifically said, acting on behalf of the select board as the proprietor of the property. I don't see any reason why at some point down the road in the process, the select board couldn't delegate some of its authority with respect to the property or the project to the Affordable Housing Trust or to some other entity. That's what the town meeting vote explicitly contemplated. It gave the board a right to convey interest and to otherwise delegate responsibility for implementation of the development scheme.
So let me lay out a hypothetical. Suppose an RFP goes out, and the responses come back, and the Affordable Housing Trust, looking at the responses, determines that they would like to see, you know, 100% affordable housing on this property and have, you know, 25, 30 So if the select board is still a player at that point, no money has been spent, it would be up to the select board to say, no, we don't want that. Let's do something else with it, or, you know, housing, or do something else with the property, go back to town meeting. I mean, those would be options that would be open, right?
I would agree, because the select board is the nominal proprietor of the property at this point in time, and has been vested with the authority by town meeting to determine how the project will proceed.
And just one, thank you, Pat. One last question for Gloria. What is the timeframe for the, contemplated timeframe for the RFP, and when would the responses come back, and when would an evaluation be made and presented to the Affordable Housing Trust Board?
Do you mean an actual calendar date, or are you talking more like?
I don't need an actual calendar date, but how many weeks, or how many months, or whatever?
It would probably take a good, you know, couple of months to craft an RFP and going through some vetting process with, you know, maybe Terry and the Affordable Housing Trust and Select Board. We would issue it, I think, a typical timeframe for an RFP of this scale would be a minimum of six weeks to give developers. So we would issue it. A week later, it would be in the central register. We would want to have a minimum of six weeks, maybe eight weeks for responses. We would review the proposal. I think within, you know, 30 days to 45 days, we could potentially select a consultant. And then the real work begins when you work on a land development agreement. I think that there's a lot of give and take between either the select board or the Affordable Housing Trust, or both of them, with the chosen developer. Maybe three months to be conservative for that. And then if it were a comprehensive permit, so we would have more than four units, then that developer would go through the whole comprehensive permit approval process, which could take, you know, up to six months with the zoning board of appeals. And then if they chose to do an application for low income housing tax credits, that's on an annual cycle, so applications are typically due in February of that year. So it's possible that, you know, they may make that next February deadline, or it may be a year later. Or it's possible that the developer who puts in an application wouldn't necessarily go for low income housing tax credits, and then that's not a factor.
Is there any point in that process at which the funds from the Affordable Housing Trust will be called upon to be expended?
I can see a project like this going forward with potentially no funds. I think that one of the places where the funds could be used for this project is if it's a smallish project, like, kind of like those util test fits, which show like seven or eight single family homes. And an organization such as Habitat wants to do that. I think that there are site issues there that are challenging for a smaller organization. I think that it would be reasonable as part of kind of a public-private partnership with this, in addition to potentially donating the land or selling it at a bargain rate, for someone to potentially ask for additional funding to help with, like, site clearing, road construction. And then, you know, as an aside, which we haven't really spoken about, so we have a sewer issue right now, because we have to, at some point, extend the sewer up to the site. So while I'm giving you these, like, timeframes that are like, you know, three months for this and six months for this, realistically, we do have to bring that sewer up.
Are any of these administrative aspects tapping into, or expected to tap into, the affordable housing funds, consulting fees that the town would occur, for example?
They could, potentially. I mean, that's a, it's a flexible funding source, because it's available without going to town meetings. So, yeah, if things like that came up, I think it's reasonable to call on the Affordable Housing Trust for that.
Okay. Thank you. I just want to say, you know, given the duration of this, of the process, I really don't see an urgency in having the town, having the select board make the demarcation of roles tonight, or in the very near future. I think it's something that we should continue to monitor. And we would listen to the recommendation and advice of the Affordable Housing Trust and the staff. But I think it's good that Mike brought this forward. I think it's good that we got town council's advice on it, and appreciate Gloria's input. But that's kind of where I'm coming down on it. I have some reluctance in, as I said earlier, just yielding this over completely to the Affordable Housing Trust at this time without knowing what the future's going to look like. And this RFP process is pretty long. So, those are my comments.
I will have to agree with one element of that, is because we don't really know the exact density of this, and the density is, to be just blunt, more of a politically driven, engaged topic. I think the select board is better engaged to deal with it at that level at this point in time. And, you know, as we move down the path, then we shift it appropriately. So, questions for the board before we go back to the public, or Mike? Mike, Shereen, and then?
Oh, no, go ahead, Shereen.
I just had a comment about process. I don't see this as a political process, Corey. I see this as, you know, the Affordable Housing Trust has a level of expertise on it that it will look at this and vet this project to the best of its ability. So I just want to put it out there that we decided to go ahead and do this, and do, have an Affordable Housing Trust outside of the select board to move these projects along quickly, or quicker than we can. I just don't want to see the select board bog things down if that becomes a problem. I'm not, I don't want to get into a push and pull on this at all. I just want to state that out there, that that board is set up for a specific reason.
Well, I don't want to go back either back, but I do think it very is political, because the Affordable Housing Trust, I think, by their model, is going to look on the denser side, just because they're trying to maximize housing. And I think, which is fine, and there's nothing wrong with that, where the select board has to figure out what is best, what is the proper density for the neighborhood, and there may be other inputs or other opinions that are brought forth in that conversation. So, I'm not saying politically in a wrong way, but it is politically. So, it's all good. It's all good conversation. It's all good, healthy conversation. Mike?
I don't disagree with anything you just said, but we have to have an understanding here of how it is that we get to a point where we actually have input that tells us what our options are. And you may want four, and I may want 12, and I'm just hypothesizing. And neither one of us knows whether either one of those is possible until we engage in the process that Gloria suggested or described. And that doesn't mean that anybody is, the one place where there is a, and I don't, again, I don't think, even if Affordable Housing Trust money is spent on some of that preliminary stuff, that doesn't eliminate, in my view, the select board from the process, for no other reason than the continued control of the property. But, and by the way, this is a collaborative process by virtue of the fact that two of us are on both boards. All I'm making a case for here is not a decision today about deputization or delegation or whatever, but an understanding of what are the next two or three steps that we can take, and who's best equipped to take and take those steps to get us the information that we need to be able to make the evaluation that you want to make and we want to make, or the Affordable Housing Trust Board wants to make. And that's really the purpose of my bringing this forward, because otherwise, if we leave this meeting with an understanding that no money can be spent out of the Affordable Housing Trust, and really, nothing can be done without, you know, if anything requires any money spent, it's got to come out of town funds, you know, and by the way, we don't know who's even going to develop the RFP, we're kind of at a standstill. And that's all I'm trying to avoid. We need, I mean, it is possible to get an RFP out there. We don't have to do anything with what comes back without agreeing among ourselves, but we need to get that out there and get the input that's necessary to be able to have information with which to make sensible decisions.
Okay. Jeff, Dean, and then I want to go to the public.
Gosh, I feel as though we're getting mired and slowed down, and I really, it's really time to get some stuff done. And I thought by creating the Affordable Housing Trust, we were going to get more efficient, more effective, and get results that we could all live with, because we had great faith in this crew that we put together. And now I'm just hearing this is going to get bogged down again in quicksand and molasses. And I just, this is arguably, and we're going to have our session next Saturday, but this is arguably our number one priority in this town, and it has been now for a couple of years. And we've done a darn good job of securing property to develop. And I'll be damned if we're going to come down and say, if you spend a dime here, all of a sudden it's got to be affordable. If you spend a dime there, and this way, it's going to be attainable. I want to develop what's the most tasteful maximization of the utility of that property that's tasteful. And I don't think it's four. I think it's five or six, whatever. It's not four. We're not maximizing its promise. So if, and I don't want to put it just four, but we may be precluding a financial model that works in the marketplace by saying it's got to be four, and it's not, it's not the right model. So I don't want to close any doors, but I also don't want to stand in the way of the Affordable Housing Trust progress as a select board member. I want to get stuff done. We need housing. We needed it 10 years ago. We needed it 20 years ago. And now we've got an opportunity to do it, and let's do it. So if an RFP is the next step, then let's do an RFP as the next step. And I feel fairly strongly that this property should be developed for affordable housing and kind of maximize its utility tastefully. We're not going to put 12 houses there or anything, but five, maybe, six, maybe. We've seen drawings that frankly are palatable to me, but I'm one voice. But I thought, I really just don't want us to get mired down in anything that smacks of political stuff here, to be honest with you, because what we need is housing. I don't want to have an argument with the Affordable Housing Trust about a whole lot of stuff. It's just noise to me. We need to move. So, I mean, I just, I'm frustrated, I guess. But I just, I thought by creating the Affordable Housing Trust, we were going to create a vehicle that allowed us to not go through all this stuff. Thanks.
Dean? I have two questions and then a comment, a question to Gloria. Does the RFP specify the number of units or the density?
So, I have not crafted an RFP yet, but I think that, like we discussed with the Meeting House Road and Main Street properties, I like the idea of giving, like, a minimum density, not really designing the site, but just saying basically, like, we'd like to see a minimum of five units or six units on the site. Show us what you can do.
Could you give them a range?
I think that that's reasonable.
Okay. And a question for Pat. With respect to any preliminary expenses, such as consulting expenses that the town might incur prior to the RFP or during the RFP process, is it okay for the Affordable Housing Trust fund to expend those funds from their, incur those expenditures from their funds?
I would suggest that it would be, Dean, provided that, at the time the funds are expended, there is an intent to develop affordable housing for low and moderate income individuals.
Some affordable, some affordable housing. Doesn't have to.
Correct.
And that could be done while the select board still retains proprietary control over this property?
Absolutely.
Okay. So, thank you. So, my feeling is, I'm not saying don't send the RFP out. Go ahead and do it. Just make sure that this is to the board, to the Affordable Housing Trust Board. You keep us informed. You come back to us. I will say something, you know, I understand, you know, Mike, I'm sorry, Jeff's concern about frustration. I think if frustration were a deterrent to serving on the Board of Selectment, I would have left this board a long time ago.
Dean, that was funny.
That's a good one, Dean.
Don't push me. But I think the Affordable Housing Trust and the staff should proceed with an RFP, and just, you know, keep the select board informed. You know, I tend toward the lower end of density. I'm not sure I'm with Corey on four, but that's where I am for this particular neighborhood. I will say this, you know, yes, we created the Affordable Housing Trust to expedite this whole process. And housing is certainly at the top. I think water is number one. I've said that publicly before. But I think housing is a close second in terms of concerns in the town. But this board as selectman, this select board has a responsibility to the voters and to the citizens of the town to make sure that everybody in this town, including the Affordable Housing Trust, is acting in the best interests of the entire community. So, that's what drives me. So, those are my comments. I'm looking forward to hearing what the public has to say. Thank you.
All right. On that note, I'm going to open it up for public comment. I'm going to start with those in the I'm going to start with those in the audience tonight. Mr. Levitt?
Thank you. I'm Rick Levitt. I'm honored to have been appointed by you to the Housing Trust. I'm not speaking for the Housing Trust Board tonight. I'm speaking personally. The, uh, the greatest threat, I want to take this to a higher level of discussion because I, as has been pointed out here tonight on several occasions, we're bogging, we're getting bogged down in detail. The greatest threat to Chatham today is the lack of housing that working families and individuals can afford. Fishing families, tradesmen and women like electricians, plumbers, carpenters, other professionals in the booming medical, retail and hospitality economy, schoolteachers, administrators, principals, town workers, like policemen and women, firefighters, EMTs, office workers, along with younger workers just starting their careers. Chatham offers very little opportunity to them to live here. And this is old news. 20 years ago, in 2003, Chatham's Long Range Planning Committee cited a 1988 study entitled Affordable Housing Strategies for Chatham. I quote, "When one compares the maximum affordable home price for an average locally employed Chatham couple or family to the average listing price for Chatham's residential properties, it is clear there is a remarkable affordability gap for locally employed, employed Chatham workers and residents who wish to acquire their own home." That's 1988, end quote. Despite the best intentions after 35 years, achievements in resolving Chatham's housing shortage have fallen short. The affordability gap continues to grow with the average price of a home today over $1.5 million. I urge you to delegate authority for solving Chatham's critical housing shortage for both affordable and attainable housing solely to your newly organized Affordable Housing Trust Board. We need to streamline this process if we're going to get anything done. This includes development of town-owned land earmarked for housing like Steppingstones Road and Old Harbor Road properties, other properties that will become available in the future for affordable and attainable housing, and control of special revenue funds designated for affordable housing." I'm almost finished. As the town's chief policymakers under the charter, you have this power to delegate, as, as was mentioned by Town Council here tonight. The situation today requires innovative strategies. If the Housing Trust Board fails to make substantive progress in the next two years, you should replace its trustees, including me. I also urge you to designate one staff member responsible for implementing trust board decisions. Efficient organization is essential to the vital business of building affordable and attainable housing that is both needed and will gain overwhelming public acceptance. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Another comment from the audience? Oh, sorry, David. All right.
David Oppenheimer, and I'm on the Affordable Housing Trust, but I'll be speaking as an individual. I got on the Affordable Housing Trust and asked to get on the Affordable Housing Trust so we can move things along. I think I've lived in this town longer than anybody on the board except for Shereen. And when I was on the Finance Committee in the seventies, we talked about housing. And now we are 40-something years ahead of that and it's a crisis. Key numbers, seven affordable houses in 10 years in this town. Seven. We were second only to Truro in lack of production, but Truro's about to pass us enormously. When I hear about somebody talking about, no offense to a particular selectman, four units because it's in keeping with the neighborhood, that's absolutely not true. There are, there are lots in that area that are less than 20,000 feet. There are many lots in that area that are less than 20,000 feet. You have to look around town when you think about density. If you look across from Mack Shack and the area that's behind Hates, there's a piece of property there on three acres. There are 10 homes. The homes range from 2,000 to 3,000 square feet. They sell in the range of over $2 million now. Some of them have now finished basements, so they're actually in the, in the low 3,000 square foot areas. And if you take an area like Steppingstone, which is two acres, and if you put eight houses on it or nine houses on it, and the houses are 1,300 to 1,500 square feet, they'll be actually less dense than that area. The fit thing or whatever the hell, whatever they call that thing that showed a road, a looped road going in with eight or nine homes on it, whether they were duplexes or single family, was excellent because it was a big buffer strip between that and the strip, which is that, the area that, that between the, the road and the, and the houses. If we don't do density, we're not going to be, we're not getting anywhere. And to talk about keeping in the neighborhood, I mean, I heard somebody suggest that, for example, on the Old Harbor Road property that we do 16 or 18 years, that would be inappropriate because that wouldn't be in keeping with the neighborhood. And I don't think we should go into a historic neighborhood like that and, and overbuild it. We should be sensitive to it. But the idea of putting four units on two acres of land in an area like that is absurd. We need density and the people that know how to do this is the Affordable Housing Trust. We waited four years for new Affordable Housing Trust because we had it tied to something else, and it finally went through. And you actually have appointed people that know what they're doing and know what they're talking about and are willing to move forward on this thing. I got on that board for one reason. Let's start doing something. And this on and on, we have, we've, you've done a great job acquiring land. And we just picked up the additional Buckley thing. I think that's public, so you're allowed to talk about it. I'm, I'm never sure exactly what you're allowed to say or not. And that was going to give us even more options. And they talk about doing something that's compatible, and we should do something incompatible in that area. But we're also talking about an area that is all two-story colonials with commercial downstairs and motels and apartments above. There's big buildings all, there's cottage colonies, there's motels, there's all sorts of things. It's density. We need density. And anybody that's talking about building half-acre zoning, you're not interested in affordable housing. You're not interested in housing, period, because you, the only way that's going to work is market rate. How do I know about this? Because I've actually been doing it for about 45 to 50 years and I'm familiar with some of this stuff. And that's why I thought I was put on, on, on the Affordable Housing Trust. I would hope that this, we should work cooperatively. I don't care who's in charge or what, as long as we're realistic about this stuff. And if it's so important for the Board of Selectmen to can keep control of, of their little piece of supposedly pleasing everybody, because you know what? Affordable housing isn't going to please anybody except the people that finally have a place to stay where they can work and live in this town. And that's going to eventually please most of the people because you're not going to please everybody. So I would hope that this board, whether it's tonight or another night, votes, whether it's three to two, four, four to one, or 5-0, to turn over these types of things to the Affordable Housing Trust so we can stop talking about it and start doing something. It is ridiculous that we have things that could be shovel-ready. You've heard, you've heard our housing director talk about the timeframe. We're talking if we started tomorrow, years before there's going to be a shovel in the ground. So every time we wait, it's another year. I'm going to be 75 in, in a few months and I'd love to see, I'd love to see a shovel in the ground and some people moving into a house before I turn 80. And the only way you're going to do that is to turn it over to the people that you gave the power to, and now you don't want to give them the power. I suggest we move forward.
Additional comments from the public? House? Nobody? Online?
Yeah, Ms. Gibbs online.
Elaine, please go ahead.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. If, the question before the board tonight is whether or not the select board should play any role in moving forward, I would, I agree with Mr. Castro. I think the Affordable Housing Trust is under the misconception that if the select board's not involved, you can just go and build anything you want. The fact of the matter is, we've been told by Ms. McPherson that if and when something goes out, you're going to be coming back to the town, the voters, and you're going to be asking for a lot of money to contribute. And if you want the public and the voters to buy onto this, you need to let them be involved in the process. And the only way for them to be involved in the process is to have the select board remain in the process so there can be discussions. I think the idea that the Affordable Housing Trust would be the only ones to decide what goes on the land without any input from the public, I don't think that was what people understood was going to be the process when this passed a town meeting. And so I would urge you, if you want support from the community, you have to let us be involved in the process because we're the ones that are going to be writing the check. And according to Gloria McPherson, it's going to be hefty. Uh, and there are a lot of things that can be done in the interim. My understanding is that there has to be a needs assessment done at some point. That hasn't been done yet. And that determines what percentage of local preference is awarded, especially if you're doing affordable housing. There are rules and regulations on that. And we, the public has to be educated on that. How many of those units will go to people who are currently in town or within the local area that work here or have connections to Chatham? We don't even know that yet and we're not going to know it for a long time. And that's who we want to provide housing for, not somebody who lives in the western part of the state with no connections to the town, with no relatives here, with no job here. So, um, I would urge you to keep the select board involved because when you keep them involved, then you keep the public involved and informed and you're more likely to get funding at the time you come to town meeting for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gibbs. Any additional comments online?
Uh, yes, Ms. McLennan?
McLennan?
Yeah, I just want to, um, first of all, I, I definitely want to have an RFP issued as quickly as possible. That would be the number one issue. It's a little upsetting to realize, you know, we finally got to this point and now the, the brakes seem to be, we're tapping on the brakes in an attempt to kind of control whether or not a parcel might be developed for attainable or affordable. That seems to be what I'm hearing and the fear of putting, investing any affordable housing, any affordable funds, affordable trust funds into a property because then we won't then be able to develop it for attainable housing. That's not what I bought into. I'm open to developing parcels for attainable housing. I think we need to do that, but I also think we need to move forward on the housing that we have, the, the land that we have. We already have a commitment on the Buckley property right now to develop half of that for attainable housing. We need to issue an RFP and do density on this lot. I, I like what Ms. McPherson has already suggested. Give a minimum amount, see what that comes back with the RFP. Right now, the Affordable Housing Trust can manage funds up to 100% AMI. Mr. Levitt had spoke about all these different jobs, the people in the, in the community that need jobs. Many of those jobs are, are individuals who make under 100% AMI. We don't need to go that much higher to, to capture a lot of the folks who are in need in this community. So I think we need to focus on that right now. When we have an opportunity to have a parcel that can easily be developed for attainable housing, I'm all for that. But I don't want to stop developing housing because somebody's trying to make sure that we can do attainable instead of affordable. I think that's ridiculous. And it's not what we're committed to at this point. The Affordable Housing Trust Fund is committed to developing housing for those who need it. And I don't know if there's any statistical data out there when people say we know that this is what people need, attainable housing. I don't know where the data is to support that they need it more than the people who need it for affordable housing. So I think people need to do a little more research, research if they want to back that up. We need to develop the land that we have and we need to give this land to the Affordable Housing Trust so that we can develop it as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments? All right. No. Coming back to the board, I mean, I guess frankly, we probably should have a joint meeting tonight because we had five members from the trust speaking this evening. I don't want this turning into a power struggle, which the tone of a lot of voices is frankly what it's turning into. You know, I think we have, we, we, the select board, they, the Affordable Housing Trust, both have responsibilities to the community. We are put in place by the elected official, by, by, by the, as elected officials of the community. The Affordable Housing Trust Fund was put together for collaboration of experts and people in certain fields that can best, you know, assist the town in the process. I don't want to get in a power struggle. I don't want to take it, but we need to keep our responsibility. The trust needs to have their responsibility. We, we all are frustrated in the process. It takes so damn long to get anything done and we all are frustrated by it. And we, I understand the tone of the frustration from other speakers, previous speakers. None of us like it. None of us do. But to turn this into more of a political power struggles is, is going to be more a waste of time. So I have no problem putting forward an RFP, some simple parameters, moving it forward, having discussions and keeping everyone involved, which is frankly what we should be doing. We should not be turning over responsibility. The select board should not be turning over responsibility this early in the process. I hear loud and clear the concerns, but we do have a responsibility to the voters on this one. So that's, with all due respect to the previous speakers, I'm not giving up my responsibility at the moment. Dean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm 100% in agreement with what you just said. I don't think this board needs to do anything tonight. We've had a thorough discussion of this matter and, and we have, I think, a clearer understanding of the process. And I think that the Affordable Housing Trust and staff can put out the RFP. And I, with respect to our comments that, you know, Carolyn made, I'm not, at least speaking for myself, I'm not trying to direct this in the, in, in, in the, move this in the direction of having attainable housing as part of the, as part of the ultimate result. I don't know whether it should or shouldn't be. I just am not willing to have the select board make a delegation of its authority, of its proprietary control over this property to the Affordable Housing Trust or to anybody else until we have a clearer picture of what is going to be proposed for this property. So I don't think we need to do anything tonight. Thank you. Mike?
So, couple of things. First of all, I made the presentation. I didn't ask anybody to delegate anything. I didn't ask anybody to give up anything. I share your antipathy, Corey, for a, a political, I called it an arm wrestling match. I'm going to leave it at that. Frankly, and, and by the way, I want to say, I, I understand and, and really appreciate the comments that came from our colleagues on the Affordable Housing Trust Board. That, that, that's not, I mean, that is a, a sense of frustration that is widespread, at least in certain quarters. So, um, you may not agree with it, but it, it, it expresses a sentiment that is, um, that is an important factor to take into consideration as we approach this problem collectively. My last comment will be, and I appreciate your, your, and I, Corey, I think you were saying the same thing, that if we can come out of this meeting with an understanding that the Affordable Housing Trust Board with staff is going to proceed with a, an RFP on Steppingstones as the first step, I, I think we've accomplished a great deal tonight. And if we have that consensus tonight, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to move forward and continue the conversation as we go forward.
Jeff?
I'm in total agreement.
I'm not sure why, the RFP is coming from the Affordable Housing Trust?
Yes. It's not a matter of where it's coming.
Coming from the town.
It's coming from the town, but, but it has to be developed. I mean, it's work that has to be done. It, it, it's not a question of who signs it, it's a question of who, who creates it.
Who feeds and waters it? Who answers questions? The select board? No. It's going to be Gloria and, and.
It's going to be Gloria and the Affordable Housing Trust. It's got to be run. It's got to be managed.
I'm not sure if I'm in agreement with that. I mean, can I ask, can I ask one? Well, no, can I ask one question? For the site, for the best development of the site, has there been any conversation? This is more of a Select Board discussion. On the bike trail, is the bike trail absolute?
What do you mean, absolute?
Can we remove it?
Oh, we haven't, we haven't finished going down that path, so to say. There, there, why, why do you have to remove it?
I think you would gain some, and I think you could. But that's, again, these are just my own personal thoughts that obviously we're not part of this engaging. But I'm saying these are conversations that should have happened, but.
So there are some questions about how it was acquired. And even, even when things aren't acquired with park funds or for that purpose, once the use is established as park use or recreation use, sometimes it can fall under Article 97. And that was the question that we had for Pat that still is not resolved. And you can take land out of Article 97, but you have to provide an equal amount of land elsewhere. And I think at some point in discussions with Terry, it was very convoluted and we couldn't, I worked with Julie too about finding the town meeting article for how it was acquired. And I don't think that we actually were able to put hands on that document to understand how it was acquired. But in doing site visits and walking behind the property on the bike path, there are a lot of topography constraints. And I'm not sure that by using that bike path for the drive that you're, and grading up to the top that you're actually going to gain land. I mean, the original conception was, well, could we use that and eliminate the loop road? Because obviously you don't want a bunch of curb cuts on Stepping Stones Road. And I think that there are type, topographic constraints that would cause a lot of clearing and a lot of grading and a lot of filling in order to access the properties from the back as opposed to doing a loop road from the front.
Okay. Dean?
Can I ask this in an effort to try to bring some consensus in with respect to the concerns, Corey, that you just articulated before you asked some questions of Gloria? Is, is the Affordable Housing Trust, I know you can't take any votes tonight because you don't have a meeting, but is the, is it possible that staff in the trust can develop an RFP, but before it's issued, it's presented to the Select Board for our information and comment?
I think that's a very reasonable suggestion.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not going to speak for the Affordable Housing Trust Board, but I, that's something I could support.
And while I have full faith and confidence in the trust, that's something I could support as well. If it kind of gets us going, let's get this going. And the question about the topography and the bike trail, I mean, perhaps a smart developer will look at that and deal with it and think that there's advantages to doing something different with it. But we don't know that until we get an RFP out there.
I agree. I can agree with it.
All right. Someone, don't be shy. Throw a motion out there.
I will move that this board authorize the Affordable Housing Trust Board, together with support from staff liaison, to, to develop a, an RFP for Stepping Stones and to bring it back to this Select Board for approval.
With all due alacrity.
Can I offer an amendment?
You can. I don't know if I'm going to accept it or not.
You will. That the RFP be styled as an RFP to be issued in the name of the Town of Chatham by and through the Town Manager.
Yeah, I just want to clarify. I don't have a problem with it except to say, I want to make it clear that this board has approval authority. We're not independently giving the Town Manager approval authority of what the Affordable Housing Trust decides.
That is not my intention.
Okay, fine.
My intention is simply to make it clear to everybody, to the entire world, that this RFP is coming through the Town Manager's office.
I have no problem with it. I have no problem with it.
And it would have to through the Chief Procurement Office anyway.
So that's my amendment.
I accept that amendment.
Okay, so we have a motion, amended motion. We have an amended amendment with a second.
Second.
Further discussion.
Did it get seconded?
Okay, okay, okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, Select Board Member Castro.
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis.
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens.
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell.
Aye.
And I will say aye. All right. Well, moving right along. Sears Road Landing Access Discussion. I will kick this over to Jeff. We also have, Rob is available, and we also have Town Council Pat Costello available for comment, too.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This item was brought to my attention. I was unaware of it by Mr. King, the Chair of the South Coastal Harbor Committee. You know, a kind of a different guardrail has been erected along Sears Road. I would say it's 10 vehicles long, if you will, on the east side or the southeast side of the road. And when I went down, it's like, when I went down to look at it, I was puzzled as to why it was erected. What was its intended purpose? There's plantings underneath it. It's very nice. It's teak or mahogany or whatever. But it's impeding access to that town landing. And I agree with Mr. King and I agree with Mr. Westgate that, and we have had this discussion in prior meetings and prior agenda items, that I think as part of our purview as we protect and enhance the use of town land and buildings and facilities is one of our major value statements, our town landings need to be protected. And I take the building of the guardrail as an encroachment on how we can access our town landing. It's Sears Point. It's where folks launch small, smaller boats. It's where folks go shellfishing. There's moorings there for commercial fishermen that are right there at the end of the, right in the Oyster River, and folks park their vehicles there. And that guardrail, in a practical sense, has taken away parking spaces, literally. 10 parking spaces, I mean, go and look at it. So I just, I, and I bring it up only because it was brought to me. I went down and looked at it, and it causes me some concern because it's encroaching on yet another town landing. I go back to the cowyard a little bit. I go back to the protection of the Oyster River town landing and et cetera. So I'm, we need to be, as a board, and I would advocate strongly, we need to be, as a board, very sensitive to encroachments to our town landings. I don't know how this thing got there or why it got there. And I would love to have some history, and I'm fairly committed to doing something about it. So that's why it's here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I mean, for some background, I know it did go through the proper permitting. It was permitted. It went through several different boards and committees before it was installed. It is installed on private property. It does raise the biggest concern of, you know, impeding access to the waterways, which is a growing problem throughout the community. This is not just an isolated location. I do share the passion of concern from Mr. Westgate, his suggested mechanisms. I am not so eager to entertain. I think that the approach, really to simplify this discussion, at least with this particular location, is just reach out to the property owner and let's have a conversation. Because we don't know exactly why it was placed in there, and maybe their intentions don't fall in line. I don't know. But to open up a dialogue and then measure it from there because maybe there's some kind of arrangement or maybe some kind of agreement. And then we take that lesson, and then we also get ahead of it on other areas throughout the community. But that's a simple thought. Just reach out to the property owner.
Dean?
Yeah, and I think that's a, and that's a fine approach, fine, fine first step. I think we have our, our, our safety folks weighing in as well for access to anything that's occurring on that beach or in that town landing. I would, I would think it would be appropriate to have them weigh in and see how much width they need. I think it's encroached on those aspects. But reaching out to the property owner, I think is probably a good idea. You don't think you, you know, go to, you know, taking or, you know, right out of the gate. Let's converse. I don't understand why. I don't understand, I'd like to know why it was built, to be honest with you, Mr. Chairman.
Dean?
Yeah, I went down and looked at it. It is, it is very tastefully put together. But it is on private property. And the town is limited in what it can do. We have an opinion from Town Council. Town has an easement there right now. It's not a parking easement. But apparently the Conservation Commission was involved in this and approved the, I know Ted Keon's here, approved the placement of this. I don't know if it required it, but apparently some conservation issues there. I was just wondering, and I agree with what, Mr. Chairman, what you suggest, we should have, do some outreach to the property owner to see if there is a way in which we can resolve this amicably, even if the town were to purchase a parking easement. I'm wondering, I know Pat Costello is on, whether an argument can be made there is, that there is a prescriptive easement for the, for public parking if this in fact has been openly and notoriously parked on for at least 20 years. I didn't see that in Pat's opinion, but I wonder if he has any comment on that. I certainly am very extremely reluctant. I'm not sure I would go along with the exercise of eminent domain on the part of the town. But I do think there are broader issues, and how this one gets resolved is, is, should be instructive on what we might do proactively with respect to access on public landings around town. Thank you.
Pat, go ahead, please.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dean's suggestion of perhaps arguing we have a prescriptive easement is, first of all, it's going to require us filing an action in court to get a judgment of accord establishing that easement in the town's favor. And in my experience, the establishment of prescriptive easement for public access purposes can be very difficult. It would require 20 years of open, continuous, exclusive, and notorious possession of that particular area by the public or the town on behalf of the public. And technically, all the property owner would have to do is establish that at some point in time within that 20-year period, he or she did exercise some level of control, whether it be by maintenance or what have it. Certainly installing the guardrail would interrupt any exclusive use by the town. So while it is legally and theoretically feasible, I think it would be somewhat of a tough row to hoe at this juncture.
Thank you, Pat. Rob, I see you're online. If you want to weigh in a little bit? Rob Failey, our DPW Director.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, yeah, this was brought to our attention back in May at the direction of the property owner, in fact. It was one of their conditions that they reach out to DPW and get approval for the guardrail installation. It was a condition in the Mass DEP and the Conservation Commitment's decision. So I did have concerns about it, not only from a parking standpoint, also a snow removal standpoint. And I also was worried about creating an obstruction adjacent to a town road layout. I did consult with Town Council, and, you know, I don't want to speak for him, but, but I know in the order of the conditions, they identified that the guardrail was installed to prevent vehicles from parking along the edge of the paved roadway, basically keeping their tires on the pavement. They showed that years of vehicles parking off the roadway destabilized the slope and caused erosion. So there may be enough of an argument there to say that it is a historical condition where vehicles have been parking there for a number of years. But, but that's the reason the guardrail was installed.
All right, thank you for that input. Not everyone at once. Mike?
Well, I'm pleased to be able to say once that this is something that I've been observing for whatever 1988 to the present is. So I, you know, over 30 years. And there have always been vehicles parked along there. The other thing that I, and I did go down and look at it. I actually walked that area quite, quite frequently. It's pretty obvious that it was put there to prevent parking. And, and the house is way up on a hill. There's, you can't see, I haven't been up there, but I'm quite sure. You can't see the house from down there. So I assume the house can't see there, see the cars. From a legal point of view, I have no comments. I read Pat's opinion. It's pretty clear. But I do think that, as you've suggested, Corey, there is something to talk about with the, with the homeowners, given the concern about the parking and the access to the, to the river for the public. And while I understand Pat's comments about easements and/or, you know, any other legal options the town might have being decidedly unattractive, they might be useful in conversation.
Jeff?
I think Mike said exactly what I was going to say in terms of worrying about prescriptive easements at present. But, I mean, I think we need to think about all the tools that could potentially be in our toolbox, that's all. And clearly, that guardrail was built to preclude parking, which has been in place for decades. And this is really a change in the Feng Shui down there. And we ought to do everything in our power to remove it.
Shreem?
Thank you. Yeah, so I've, I've been down that, since I was like a kid. I mean, so I've been, at that landing, my mother used to take me there. That's where we go dig plams. I know the history in front of the bill, that whole Oyster River was, Oyster Shanties was all working waterfront. And I was, I, I agree that a conversation with the owner is fine. This was put in place to keep people from parking. There was poison ivy on that bank. There wasn't, it wasn't being eroded. But, you know, if that, I don't, you know, that's just my observation. I'll just put it that way. Heard from a lot of people about this. I talked to staff last year as they were going through the process of this. I sat in on some of the meetings, the Shellfish Advisory, when they were talking about their project they were doing in front of the house, in front of the land, and where all the dinghy dock area is. And then this had come up. And, and a lot of people that have traditionally used this property used Sears Landing as a place. We're very up in arms. It changed the entire vibe of that landing. It really did. And I was reading through some stuff the other day, and I found this article that was written by a woman named Nik Kooms, is a fisherman's wife, and she is part of the Maine Fishermen's Association. She wrote it into Commercial, she wrote it for Commercial Fisheries News. So she was somewhat preaching to the, the squire.[1666.04] The choir, I guess. It's been a long night. But it's called "The Gentification of the Working Waterfront," and it speaks about the disassociation that is happening in coastal communities between the wealthier community and the working waterfront. And I would say to the, you know, like this is a recreational and a working waterfront area, and how this is impacting the economics of the community, the culture of the community, and you know, the landscape. So it just, it's happening everywhere. I think I've spoke at this meeting about Watch Hill in Rhode Island, where the commercial fishermen can't even get access to their boats unless they pay into using a yacht club. And that just, you know, this is what we're looking at. There should be, I think there should be a symbiotic relationship that we develop with people that are abutting our town landings. We should be talking with them. We should be expressing, you know, with respect to Chapter 91, they have every right to the front of their property and access and all that. But I think it's important for people that are living in near landings, near the fish pier, near the trap dock, anywhere, to have a good understanding of where they've bought and what it means to the community to maintain those access. Whether that's going to change their mind or not, it's, or impact them or whatever, but I think that this is becoming an increasing problem for this community, is the wealth disparity and the increased disconnect that we're seeing amongst the community. These things are important to all of us, and I guess the first step, Corey, would be to have a conversation with the property owners. They're different than they were, you know, a while ago. I think it's, you know, it's a next generation of family that owns that. But again, I would not be averse to having a conversation about what we need to be doing to secure the stability of our working waterfront and our town landings.
Agreed. Dean.
I just wanted to add, I appreciate Pat's comment about prescriptive easements because I tried a case once when I was Assistant Attorney General and was on the other side opposing an argument that a street was a public way on the basis of public usage over 20 years. I just wanted, it sounds, one other thing I wanted to add, it just sounds like we're not going to have to talk with just the property owner, we're going to have to talk with the Conservation Commission, because it looks as though this fence was put there at their behest and the behest of the State Department of Environmental Management as well. So, but I think that is the approach we need to take.
Agreed. Shreem.
And I understand that the Conservation Commission does have purview and regulations that they abide by, but there needs to be an understanding with the people that we're appointing into these committees about what is important to our community, if they're weighing in on things that could be a yea or a nay. And so that's part of where we might have fallen short, but I'm not sure we did, because I think it came before them from being vetted from other committees. So I think that, I think you're right, we should be having conversations, maybe this is stuff we talk on Saturday a little more about, is how we express to our committees our values and our policies that we're setting here in relationship to the decisions they're making.
I fully agree. We're going to have to deal with this one item, but we have a broader discussion that we need to get ahead of. All right. Motion? Yes, please. David.
Actually, I was not going to let public comment on this one. No, it's fine. David, I'll begin again. A couple of questions. One, I am on the Waterways Advisory Committee, but I'm not speaking for the Waterways Advisory Committee. I assume the town was noticed by the Conservation as in a butter on all these things? Is that, would that be correct?
I'm not sure.
Well, I mean, they have to legally do that. I can tell you, as a member of the Waterways Committee, we weren't notified of this. This was a surprise to us. So it's done. I think the Conservation Commission, their jurisdiction is preservation, conservation. I don't think their concern would necessarily be parking. But I think what we should be doing is when things like this go, is we go and make our presence felt and oppose it and say, look, we're going to oppose this thing, and we may, if we think, whether it's prescriptive rights or anything else, we have a case to stop the whole thing, because that gives you negotiating power. So for example, if the town had taken a position that they were going to oppose this, and if an order of conditions was issued, or this, that, we're going to appeal it, now you're talking about legal fees, and now what you get into is a position of saying, can we reach a compromise? Now we have, we have no leverage whatsoever. We can go and ask permission and be nice, but the answer is if somebody's doing something that, in my opinion, because I've been going down there for a long time too, and it's always been parking there in the 50-odd years I've been here, and not quite sure in childhood, but that's, I think there'd be a heck of a case. I'm not a lawyer, and I do know it's a very difficult thing to prove, but the answer is we let it happen without any opposition. It's called awareness. It's too bad the Waterways Advisory Committee wasn't made aware that this was in front of us. We could have, as a Waterways Committee, gone, and, because one of our things we're tasked with now is reviewing all of our town landings, how they're functioning, how they should be protected. We dealt with cow yard. So that, you can't wait for an event to happen and not react to it. You have to, if something's going to happen that's going to affect it, we have to make our presence known. I appreciate our highway director went down and made sure, but again, that's not what his job is, the job. It should have been in front of the Waterways Committee, and we should have been making our opinion. We think we should go and start and do everything we can to fight this, and then maybe we could have reached an agreement then. I'll tell you what, you can do your conservation, but give us eight feet off the edge of the pavement. We'll take care of the maintenance, maybe there would be a dollar amount, because again, people are pretty smart. If there's going to be a fight, most, that's the best chance to reach a compromise. Once you've lost, what's the incentive? The incentive is to be a nice people, and maybe they are nice people, but the, since they put the thing up to obviously block the, block the parking that's been there historically, my guess is probably they're not going to be too responsive to something like that. I hope I'm wrong on that, and that they turn out to be great and say, let's move it back so you can park there. But we have to be proactive, not reactive. I mean, we, we had to have been noticed. That's, if we weren't noticed, it wasn't a legal hearing. I mean, we're in a butter. That's the way it is. There's a butter, there's a butter notices that have to go out, there's orders of conditions, there's a legal amount of time in which you can appeal it, and then the thing is, it goes to court. This all takes time, and maybe that was the time, if we had done that, maybe we'd be having a conversation from a position of strength instead of a position of weakness. Thank you.
Shreem.
I agree. This happened, I mean, I think that a lot of this started to be called to attention when the cow yard happened, and I think that's when we said, let the waterways start to look at some of the landings. This was happening, you know, unaware until we saw the fence come in. And, you know, I don't, I can't remember how the process went with, with the departments, you know, if Conservation had it, then the Conservation agent had it. Shellfish dealt with the front of the, the front part of the project, but I'm not sure that they looked at the coastal bank issue at all.
I mean, I don't know for a fact, but I would suspect that perhaps Conservation focused on the front of the property rather than, maybe didn't even notice that there was a guardrail. I don't know.
It was about a coastal bank that...
I know, I understand. I mean, I don't fault, I don't fault that, but you know, we volunteered to be on a board, Waterways Committee. We spend a lot of time, we spent over a year getting a mooring bylaw written in a way that, it didn't solve every problem, but it certainly made it better. It was passed by a town meeting and eventually made it through. We need to be aware of things when they come up. We're not noticed. The town is noticed. So once it's noticed, who should be involved in this? Certainly the people that are looking at the town landings should have been notified. We would have, then you could have asked for our advice on what we thought, how important is it? But that doesn't happen. And that's what, that's what's part of the, use the, if you want us to be on committees and you want us to do our work, we need the courtesy of knowing what the heck's going on in town so we can react appropriately. Thank you.
Make a motion to close it up.
Next steps?
Next steps, I think we reach out to the party.
Who's to do that?
With the town manager, want to designate a little small little team? Do you want to do it directly?
Yeah, I'm happy to do it if you, as the chair, want to also participate.
I'll participate, yeah. I mean, I'd rather reach out with a friendly hand and kind of see where it goes. I mean, I think that's the first step.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah.
I'll be happy to be involved.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay, we'll coordinate a team to do that. Sure. All right. Don't need a motion, we're good. All right, we're good. All right. Next, consider expansion of the Cultural Council on Aging Board of Directors. Couple of quick little notes before we get into the dialogue of that. So we have, where'd my notes go? Just for the record, Tom Clark, Dory Butler, and Gail Tilton have all withdrawn for their candidacy, so we only have one potential candidate remaining for consideration, which we'll be talking about shortly. And we also have a letter, let me try to find it. Someone have the letter from the Council on Aging Board of Directors?
What was attached?
It's attached as a resolution.
Okay, yep, sorry. Sorry. And I'm just going to take a moment to read that into the record, and then we can start our dialogue. So this is the Board of Director of Chatham Council on Aging, resolution adopted November 20th in 2023. Whereas Patricia Burke, Chair of the Board of Directors, parentheses, Board, the Chatham Council on Aging, parentheses, COA, and La Crosse, Chatham Director of Community Services, received a memorandum dated July 26, 2023, from Kathy Lewis, Executive Assistant, to the Chatham Town Manager and the Chatham Select Board, parentheses, SB. Subject, Select Board Request for Review, Composition of Board and Possible Expansion of Members, Council on Aging Board of Directors, the memorandum, and, whereas the memorandum contains the following request of the Select Board to the Board, verify who, verify who plans to remain on the BOD with all the current COA Board members, discuss potential expansion of the number of the COA Board, make a recommendation to the Select Board if they wish to enlarge the COA Board of Directors, and indicate how many seats, and, whereas at their meeting on November 20, 2023, the COA Board discussed, discussed and confirmed each member's intention toward remaining on the Board and discussed the potential expansion of the Board from seven, seven members to nine members, and, whereas at their meeting on November 20, 2023, the COA Board also entertained comments from five members of the public who wanted to speak on this matter. Now therefore it be resolved that the Board of Directors of the Chatham Council on Aging recommend to the Chatham Select Board that the composition of the Board of Directors and the Council of the Chatham Council on Aging remain at seven members. Adopted at a meeting of the Board of Directors of the Chatham Council on Aging held November 20, 2023 by a vote of five yea and one nay. So that is the documentation from the COA Board of Directors, and now I will turn it over to the Board. So kind of simple, pretty simple situation we're in. Mike.
Yeah, so we've been at this a long time, certainly since January or February. I think two things have happened. One is that there has been a very, very considerable increase, broadening, deepening of the town's consciousness of the COA, the CFAL, and its needs, and what it does very favorably to the senior community of Chatham. Two, I think there has also been a broadening and deepening of interest and desire to participate in one way or another of, with the COA. And I think those have been both very beneficial. I think it's also clear that the COA and the CFAL have very significant challenges. We have one initiative in front of us with respect to the building and the evaluation of the building, but there are challenges there. I think it is time to close ranks and agree, unify, support the COA and the CFAL, and do what we can to support that Board with, with what it's going to be facing over the next year or two. So with that as a basis for addressing the, the resolution of the Board of, of the COA, I want to make a motion to accept their, their recommendation and to leave the COA Board at seven members.
Do I hear a second? Further discussion? Dean.
Yeah, I just, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Mike, for those comments, and I share your, your position. And I was at that Board meeting, and I did speak in favor of the position that the Board ultimately took, so I do support the recommendation of the, of the COA Board that it remain at seven members. Thank you. Jeff.
I do support it as well. I will say that I enjoyed tremendously interviewing all the applicants that presented themselves for potential membership on the Council. Thank you.
Shreem.
I know that some of them did, I agree with you, Jeff. I know some of them did withdraw their application just recently, but there's, there was a lot of talented enthusiasm around, around the people that were interviewed, and I feel, I hope that they will reconsider when there's another opportunity.
All right, thank you. Before we take a formal vote, I did say we'd have public comment. I don't think there's really much of a need, but is there anyone from the public who wants to comment on this? No, no. All right. We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, Select Board Member De Castro.
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis.
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens.
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell.
Aye.
And Select Board Member Metter says aye. All right. Well done, Jeff. Well, well done. Appointments. Council on Aging, as was just stated, we have one candidate for one opening, so the math is relatively simple on this one.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
I move to appoint Kurt Shallow to the Council on Aging Board of Directors until June 30th, 2024, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed.
Do I hear a second? I'll second that first. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, Select Board Member De Castro.
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis.
No.
Select Board Member Dykens.
No.
Select Board Member Shell.
No.
Select Board Member Metter says aye, so that fails three to two. So it's still an open seat. Zoning Board of Appeals, we have a recommendation from the committee to elevate Ms. Fenwick to, are you sure? No? Yes?
Yes.
Ms. Fenwick to the regular seat, which would, which would still keep two associate seats open and available. So with that recommendation from the zoning Board of Appeals, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move to appoint Virginia Fenwick as a regular member to the zoning Board of Appeals until June 30th, 2026, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed.
Second. Okay, all those in favor, Select Board Member De Castro.
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis.
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens.
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell.
Aye.
And Select Board Member Metter says aye. And last item on the agenda tonight is the Town Manager's Report for October 2023. I'll turn it over to our Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I understand it's getting late, but I don't want to shortchange our years of service recognition for our employees. And as you see at the top of the list, Julie Smith, our town clerk, is celebrating her 29th year anniversary with the town come December. And as you see here, there's much longevity here, and many of the staff that you see on a daily basis or through your Board meetings, so I just want to congratulate the staff members for their years of service. I also want to welcome new hires. So the two positions that were, one was made full-time for DPW, and the other one as a DPW Department Assistant has been filled. We have Sawyer Bengston as our Department Assistant in DPW, so helping out with, he's done so much already, working with our, our new work order system and digitizing and innovating with the department files as well as our processes. So it's been really exciting to have Sawyer, and you've seen the introduction memo that we had sent directly to you. We also have Quinn Foreman, who is new to the DPW as our Cemetery Division Department Assistant, and he's doing great, very interesting background with working with the Marconi Center, but also has a tech background. So I think today or this week has been his week with Dee, who has recently retired to show him the ropes, and so we're really excited about that. And we also have Greg Burman, who you had met, as introduced last week as the Director of Natural Resources. The other headliners to the report include the announcement by Harbor Master Stuart Smith of his retirement in March 2024, and I included his retirement notice in a few words that I had sent to the town employees about his years of service. And he certainly was very passionate about his work, a dedicated public servant, and really seen as a leader in the field of his Harbor Master and his involvement with the statewide Harbor Masters Association. So we congratulate Stuart on that. And then with that, we'll be working on a recruitment for the Harbor Master. I understand the, the community value and importance of it, and we're looking to have a recruiter help us out just to make sure that it's provided the legitimacy and to get the, the most qualified candidate to serve with us. So we're excited about that. And so in that report, there's a lot of information. I've asked staff to put a little more information about the work of their committees, and so one of the items that is probably coming forward soon, Park and Recreation Commission, they're looking at a dog park, so I found that interesting. And then there's some Osprey polls that will be coming to the Board for review and approval in the next coming weeks. So I know you appreciate the, the monthly report, and certainly including the work of the committees is always great, and to foreshadow what will be coming before the Select Board. So that's it for my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
As, as always, thank you to you and all the department heads for putting this, this collection together, because I think it's a, it's a nice little snapshot of what's going on and keeps us informed. So comments from the Board?
Thank you, Jill, for putting it together. As always, it's a really good read.
All right. One last motion of the night.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Everyone's on top of that one. All those in favor, Select Board Member De Castro.
Aye.
Select Board Member Davis.
Aye.
Select Board Member Dykens.
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell.
Aye.
And Select Board Member Metter says aye. Good night, everyone.